Yes, and we'd like to hear from you. I'm sitting in this seat because our interim mayor had an eye appointment today. Yes, sir. And had to go to the doctor.
Yes, sir, I'm Terrell McBrayer.
Is that-
Harrelson County, and I have a lot of roots here in Carroll County.
Check, check, hang on, she's gonna check, make sure it powers on.
We're sorry, we have a problem with that Michaela, so it's not your fault.
Testing better.
Yes, I'm Terrell McBrayer from Harrelson County, but I have roots here in Carroll County in Villareca. My ancestors, the Leathers and McBrayers and Chambers were all involved in the early history of the county. And I'm here to express appreciation for the support we've gotten for the Hart House. This house, my relatives have built it many years ago, and I'm a founding member of the Historical Society here in Villareca. I just want to express my appreciation to the city and to the church especially, the First Baptist Church, for the way that they have supported the preservation of this great building. This house is a plantation house, built in 1824. You talk about some exciting history, it's really exciting, and I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm kind of a consultant with the Historical Society, I was involved in Harrelson County in rebuilding the historic courthouse there, chaired the committee there, and then we have a rebuilt schoolhouse there, and started a public library, so, but I'm very interested in this section of the country where my folks settled, and I appreciate, again, I appreciate so much. Your vision statement really turns me on. It talks about the city of Villareca to be a safe, diverse community, and seeks to enhance the quality of life, preserve the historic character. That's the part that really turns me on. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Now, is this on?
Yes, ma'am.
Can everybody hear me? Okay. I'm Prissy Sullivan, I'm at 207 North Avenue and a citizen of Villareca. We've been here thirty-six years, and I am a big believer of preserving historic sites and so on. Comes to mind about the terminal station in my hometown of Macon that they restored and kept, and the Fox Theater in Atlanta. And I'm glad to see that they have preserved the Hart House and not lost it. I do have some questions though about the necessity of putting in sewer and water to a plantation house that didn't have sewer and water to start with. Somehow, I must have been on vacation when a lot of this was gone over, so I'm a little vague on the agreement with the church and what it entailed. And before the council moves forward, I'd like to see those documents, and when they agreed to put in the sewer and water, and what that involved, and what the cost is gonna be, and how many citizens of Villareca other than one church that it would benefit. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And by the way, some groups have you sign in to start with, let's get there. Just say it. Didn't they just call them in?
Douglas County does that.
Okay.
So is Carroll County Commission.
What if you don't sign in in the beginning? Do you still get to talk?
No, they'll-
You get to talk last.
No, you have to be last.
All right, Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive in Mirror Lake. I'm, I'm in favor of preserving history, but because of the sharp differences between the estimated cost of this sewer line and now the actual cost, I would be in favor of finding a way to kick this can down the road a little bit until we could find reasonable means to do economic development in the seventy-eight corridor and make the attachment at that point. Yeah, there's a big difference between what the council thought they were gonna pay and what it looks like they're gonna pay. So if there's a way to delay this some until there's a good reason to develop that corridor, which I, I think will eventually happen, I think that's what we should do.
Is there anyone else? Okay, yeah, we'll close the public comments, and the first item of vogue business is the Hart House. And I'm gonna bring you up to speed on how we got to where we are on the Hart House. Some-
Danny, would you also clarify-
I got competition.
Would you also clarify for everybody how this line is, because we keep calling it Hart House, right?
Uh, actually, I was gonna start off that way.
Great, thanks.
There was an old house located on Highway seventy-eight on First Baptist Church property. The house deteriorated, had termite damage, had water damage, and had some rot, severe rot in it. So they asked the city and got a permit to demolish it. They actually received a permit. They were on the, in the process of getting ready to take the asbestos out of it when, um, I don't know if it was Jody Mount or whoever started a groundswell of public opinion on a social media campaign to save what they called the Hart House. Uh, we didn't have a clue what that was at the time, but now we know it's, it's the house that was sitting out on seventy-eight. It apparently began as the Hart House, but over the years has had many renovations and changes. Didn't look quite like the original picture. So the church was civic-minded, they did not want to destroy an antique house that the people wanted to try to save. So they got together with the city to try to work out an agreement as to what, how to move the house off of their property. All they wanted was the house to be moved out of the way, because they, they had plans that were being held up to expand parking, because the church is doubled in size and growing fast. So they kept meeting with the city until they worked out a deal, an agreement. Okay, the original agreement was the church would relocate the Hart House, and they would donate four acres of their property on Van Wert Road, relocate the house onto that four acres, would become its permanent position, and deed that over to the city. The city's part was that they wanted to run sewer from Waterford subdivision over to Van Wert. It wasn't to support the Hart House, it was to expand development along Van Wert Road. So the sewer was going to Van Wert, and it was going across the church property, because that was a shortcut. So the church didn't really have an interest in the sewer, but if they could, they have a lift station. The church has a lift station of their own, a hundred-and-fifty gallon lift station, two pumps. If they could shut down the lift station and tap on, pay to tap on to the sewer line, then they're all in favor of that agreement. And that's really the original agreement, was it was sold as a win-win to the council that we would come, we would be able to develop Van Wert area along Van Wert Road, if we had a sewer line over there, and the church would be able to shut down the lift station and get out of the sewage business. So that was the original proposal. The, and it went along that way, all the way up, and actually got onto a consent agenda. The one thing the council failed to ask in the beginning, what's it gonna cost us? Uh, we were missing doing that, and we didn't know that. We found out that about two days before the vote, that it was gonna cost three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. The church actually spent forty thousand dollars moving the house, and eleven thousand or twelve thousand dollars as getting an engineer to design a route for the sewer from the lift station, or a sewer route from Van Wert over to Waterford. So that, and the, the value of the property is set at a hundred-and-ten thousand dollars, the four acres that they were gonna donate. So they ran to it for over a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. But, there, you know, the church is for the people, so they agreed to that, and thought things were going along fine until the estimate came in on the construction of the sewer line. It came in at three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. And all of a sudden, the council got a rude awakening. Three-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, we don't have that kind of money for a sewer line, not right now. So, um, we hired, the city hired an engineer to look for alternate routes that might be cheaper. And after he explored three or four different routes, he came up with a route, and it was actually more expensive than the original estimate on the one that was designed by the church's hired engineer. So the price actually went up and stood it down for sewer line. Uh, that was still totally unacceptable, so we needed an alternative solution to that. The church, in the meantime, three months ago, had already moved the Hart House, put it on the four acres, and was standing by for the city to do their part and finalize the deal. So, he, I, I kinda had some inside input from the church, since I'm a member of the church, and they said, um, they had told me that they didn't like being in the sewage business. I thought, well, maybe if I just made a proposal that would hardly cost the city anything, if, if the city would take over the lift station and operate and maintain it, until which time they can put the sewer line in, and the church was agreeing to give an easement for the sewer line too, uh, maybe that would make them happy. So I ran that by some trustees, and sure enough, they said, yeah, that's, that would be fine. Let them operate it, we'll get, we'll be out of the sewage business, and we'll be patient. We'll wait for the sewer line. So I made that proposal, and now that's really what we're gonna discuss tonight, is an alternate proposal which, um, will cost the city hardly anything. They won't have to spend that money for a sewer line till downstream, they can shove it down, like you pointed out, it can be done later, you can set, make it several years down the road when we have the money for sewer line to develop Van Wert. The, uh, we have a report coming from our public works man, he's gonna give us a report on what he knows, and we've also invited the people, the company is Crossing Sons on Liberty Road, they're the ones that maintain the lift station for the church at a cost of eight-hundred dollars every six months, I think it went up to eight-seventy. It's eight-seventy every six months, which makes it seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars a year to maintain the lift station. So I guess first we wanna hear from Pete, is that the way we wanna do it?
Um, I'd go ahead and let your, your guess.
Okay.
Since my name is Ben Bader, put out there, I'd like to make some clarifications.
Well, we were, I just said, you, you started, I think you-
I did not start.
Okay, you didn't start it, did I?
Bailey. Bailey? Uh, yeah, historians too, but I was also at that first meeting, and there was, there was never been an agreement. It has always been discussion, there's never been any promises made on any one of the houses.
Okay. The city, and they point out, the city has not signed an MOU yet, we're still trying to come up with a solution. Unfortunately, we gave, the city manager the go-ahead to make the deal, he made the deal with the church, the church did their part, moved the Hart House, set it on the new property. It sits over there now, waiting to be deeded over. That part is, is reality.
Well, it is, I was told it was a church member that paid for it, through the church.
Uh, the church member didn't pay for it, the, the church paid forty thousand to move the house and twelve thousand to design a sewer line. And also put, got the property appraised for a hundred-and-ten, so they're into it for a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars once they did it over. That being said, um-
Yeah, I'd like to clarify also, you, you had, you were using the term agreement, the proper term is the negotiations, and then-
Right. We never have, we have not signed an agreement, we have never voted on an agreement. We're trying to come up with an agreement that'll satisfy both parties, the city and the church. So it never has gotten to the point of a vote, so don't think it's been voted on. Yeah, just a minute.
Yes, sir, would you restate the proposal because it's so significant?
The proposal was, the church, the church would move, would relocate the Hart House onto the four acre property, and they would be prepared to deed the property with the house on it to the city. And, and there, the city's part was, they were gonna run a sewer line to Van Wert to develop Van Wert, and the church would be allowed, they would pay to tap on, but they would tap on to the new sewer line.
That's a new proposal.
Uh, the new proposal is that the city would take over the operation of the lift station. There's, there's a lift station on the church property, they would take over the operation and maintenance of that lift station until they run a sewer line to Van Wert, and the church has tapped on and gotten off the lift station. I think, actually, I don't even know if the lift station was involved in one of the designs, the city hired an engineer to look at alternate routes for the sewer line. But the whole idea was not to run the sewer line for First Baptist Church, it was to run a sewer line across the property of First Baptist and have it available on Van Wert. That was the, the proposal, the whole idea. So now, we're gonna start off by hearing from Crossing Sons, Tony, who is the guy in charge of maintaining that lift station, so we can see what's going on with the lift station.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Prodim, um, you had said that the, the council gave the city manager permission to enter into the agreement.
We okayed his, uh, dealing-
Negotiating.
Yeah, we okayed his negotiations to, to make a deal with the church.
Okay, but he never made that deal?
Oh, yeah, the deal was made.
Mr. Carter, this is an improper meeting, just to be having a general discussion back and forth among the audience. Maybe we wanna leave public comment at the end, but as a presiding officer, we don't need to just have discussion going back and forth.
I totally agree with you, so let's, we'll get back to that later on.
We can consider whether you wanna have public comment at the end also, but-
Let's hear about the lift station and then get Pete's report.
My name is Tony Taddy, uh, we maintain the lift station for the church, we go out every six months. I actually started working on the lift station a couple of years ago. It had never been properly maintained at the time. Uh, we had to replace four pastors on it, we had to clean the station out with our, our jet vac truck, we got a truck that specializes in cleaning out lift stations and sewers. And so we vacuumed it out, washed it down, cleaned it, had over two and a half foot of sludge and slurry in the bottom. We got the pumps back up and working, instead of having a float system, and it has what's called a probrot system. Now, the probrot has ten sensors on it that allows the pump to tell which pump to turn on, the pumps actually jump up back and forth and alternate to where you don't wear the pumps out. Um, after we replaced the probrot as well, and the four sensors from station at that time was working fine, running proper amps as to what it should be running, and is now, we've been staying on top of it, it's now running very efficiently.
What would happen if a pump went out?
The other pump, on the sensor rod, it has ten sensors. The middle sensor, which would be your number five sensor, actually is called a lag sensor, and that will make the other pump run on its own until you get out there, it'll put the station also in an alarm to where it will let somebody know that it's having problems and it needs to be maintained.
What would happen if you had to overhaul one of these pumps?
Uh, this is a flight system which is made by Exileum. Exileum is located up in Swanee. You pull the pump, you run it up there, they can have it rebuilt and back in station, usually within a week, week and a half. The, the city itself and county has the same lift stations.
What would be the cost for something like that?
On a, on a small three-point-eight horsepower, it's usually around, between, it can be as low as a thousand to high as four thousand, depending on what's wrong with it. The pump has to be replaced, it's usually around between two to four thousand, depending on which model it is.
What's the, what's the cost of a brand-new pump?
Around four thousand.
Four thousand?
The one to four is rebuilt.
Uh, the one to two would be rebuilt, uh, two to four would be a replacement if we could get the right one, that would max right back up.
Any questions?
It's, it's a small station, it's, it's one of their lower-end stations, um, so you usually turn around on the pumps or fairly quick.
So if and when we did run a line out there sometime, if we were expanding, we would probably have to change that to a larger-
If we used the lift station, we would.
Yeah, if you, if you wanted to put anything else, that's a low-volume station, so it's, the most it's ever gonna be able to run is that church and maybe one small building. You would not be able to put, uh, a lot more buildings onto that, you know, it just doesn't-
I don't think the route- Yeah, I don't think the route chosen actually used that lift station that had us on.
If, the one thing where you could do is save money on that station is if the city would, we, right now, because it is a private location, we have to haul the waste to, um, and, and manifest and profile on it, so it has to go to Boca Industries. If we could then take that waste, since it would then become city waste, to your city treatment plant, it'd probably knock two to three hundred dollars off that, that service as well. We could just dispose it of, over to your treatment plant, because then it's city waste. We're not trucking it into Atlanta to get rid of it.
What's the maintenance cost again, every six months?
Right now, it's eight-seventy.
Okay. Thank you.
And you'd probably get it down to five-fifty, six hundred, maybe even a little less, I'd have to do the numbers on it, if we could truck it just to the city plant, and then we do some work for the city plant anyway, every now and then.
The, the church is, the whole reason they started is that the church is expanding. Uh, you said that it was a system that couldn't handle a whole lot more, is it gonna be capable of, of handling the new building?
Yes, sir. That, that's why I said it could handle maybe one other building, it'll be able to handle what the church is expanding to. In all, you, if you wanted to increase the output, all you have to do is change the impeller on the pumps, and they'd be able to pump a little more, a little more water if you wanted to. And that's not really that expensive.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Tony.
All right, and I did bring some information for your other lift stations for you to look at that would make them more energy efficient, they're smart-run systems, so you may wanna look at maybe-
This is for other Villareca lift stations?
For other Villareca lift stations.
Yeah, not, not concerning this church station?
Not with that one, it won't work on this one.
Okay.
All right, thank y'all.
Um, just in case there's questions from staff, sir, can you, um, hang out? We're about to have a staff presentation.
Okay, Pete.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I've got a little PowerPoint presentation. Good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have a presentation? There must be multiple things on your thumb drive.
Yeah, it should be at the very bottom of my thumb.
You can sort by date, and it should come right on the top.
While they're working on that, I forgot one thing, we have our mayor-elect, Jeff Reese, in the room, and the council was gonna invite him to come up, have a seat, and see what it looks like from this side, so he can get the feel for it, because it won't be long for him, he'll be sitting up here. If Mr. Reese would like to, he may come up and have a seat.
Didn't you guys like build this? Didn't you like build this?
I didn't build this.
That's a group? I was gonna say, I think-
I don't know if anything bad happened, you can't-
I think it was the inmates or somebody I thought built this, thought you might be here when all this built. We have to share, monitor what the things are doing.
We can hear you.
So, don't get too close to me if you're sick.
Can you hear me okay?
No, I'm not sick.
Can you hear me all right?
A lot of repairs.
Can you hear me now? All right, good.
Uh-oh, smile, you're, you're gonna be on Facebook soon.
Okay, one thing I'd like before I start the presentation, at the last council meeting, actually, uh, alternative B was talking about the lift station and the force main, okay? Uh, and, and of course, it had a high price tag of four-hundred thousand plus on that. Let me scroll through this if I can operate this properly.
There's an on-off button on there. Don't worry, I had the same problem.
Okay, I'm just gonna scroll through this real quickly, not take up a lot of time. These are just some photos, uh, of the existing lift station there at the Baptist Church. The one to the right there is, is with a hatch open, and that's down in the manhole where the two pumps are located. The one in the lower left are actually the discharge lines and a vault that's adjoining that one. Uh, control panels for it. That's a vent, uh, for the vault where the wet well is, where the pumps are located. To the right is a sewer manhole, and down below is a yard hydrant. Okay. It's very important that we, we have to follow our ordinances that the mayor and council have put in place and approved. In our utility design and construction manual, uh, is part of that requirement. This would be very much like if we had a subdivision that had a road that wasn't up to our specs, and we would want that developer to bring it up to specs before we took it. Viewing this lift station in the same regard, that we do have design and construction specifications for lift stations that we have to follow. What, and because of that, there, it, it, these also dovetail to EPD, uh, requirements as well. So with that being said, there are a lot of things that are lacking in this existing lift station. It is undersized. It would be prudent if we go, go into a design going forward, the proper engineering would be that you would try to do something that had a twenty-year lifespan to it. The force main on this is undersized, it's a three-inch force main, our specs require minimum of four inch. And when we get to the final cost takeoff that we showed at the last council meeting, the cost takeoff was actually on a six-inch line, and it was sized for, uh, for future growth that may be coming in from the intersection there from seventy-eight and Van Wert. I'm gonna scroll through here, and some of the things highlighted in yellow are things that would need to be addressed, and I won't, I won't bore you with the details, but they are many, and some of these are very significant. From design calculations to the drainage of the basin flow, uh, we have to determine what the capacity, uh, of a future station would take. There's a lot of engineering and design that needs to go into this to make sure that our numbers are accurate, and, uh, in the short time span that we've had, we've done the very best job that we can, but there's still some work to do. Uh, again, I'm just going through these very quickly. Other concerns, that current lift station, actually, I don't know if I've got a pointer on here or not. Oh, I just turned it off. Okay. The lift station is over in this area, the force main goes around the church property, comes down here, and actually goes into- comes down here, and actually goes into a manhole entering into the Waterford subdivision. We have a lift station in that subdivision that also takes flow from this development across the road, and, and what I understand is also this apartment complex.
It goes through here.
So there's quite a loading already that's existing on, uh, the Waterford lift station itself. If we were to, to develop this area, and whatever that anticipated flow is coming down to this station, we have to have force mains big enough to accommodate that, we need to have a vault big enough, we need to have pumps big enough to pump all that, and then I think we need to be concerned, if and when we did all that, are we gonna overload this, or we have to upgrade this at some top-dollar number? So, again, what I'm talking about, we need to do maybe a little bit more exploration and see what impact it does have. Uh, it, it might behoove us to take a little bit more time to, to take a look at that, and, uh, but if we, if we were to look at this lift station, those are the things that are, that are involved with that scenario. Now, this was, uh, the estimate that we gave at the last council meeting here.
Is, excuse me, Pete, is this, is this the estimate for running a new sewer line? Uh, that we, we looked at estimates for running a new sewer line, but, uh, what we were talking about on the proposal was simply to maintain the church lift station until down the road we come up with the money to run the sewer line. We weren't talking about doing anything, any engineering, just to maintain the lift station. It's church lift station.
So, a maintenance agreement and not taking ownership?
That's, we would not be upgrading the lift station for any other people to tap onto it.
But I mean, are you proposing a maintenance agreement?
Yeah.
Or are you, uh, a maintenance agreement in conjunction with the city taking ownership of the lift station and the appurtenances?
Uh, that's what we'll have to work out, but, um, we're trying to work out a deal with the church, it won't cost the city four hundred thousand dollars and half a million dollars to put a sewer line in right now.
Well, with this presentation, before we took ownership, these costs would be involved because we'd have, before we could take it over, we would have to upgrade that station. And you wouldn't wanna upgrade it, just, you'd have to dig up all the three-inch force main that's there, 'cause number one, it doesn't meet even our minimum, so it doesn't make sense, really, in my estimation, to go back with a four-inch, because we may have more capacity coming at that, so that's why, in this takeoff, uh, over here, in part of, uh, this cost takeoff right here showing a six-inch force main, that was purposely sized a little bit larger to accommodate the anticipated flow from that sys, system. Now, one thing I can tell you, there is, we've kicked this around a, a little bit more, uh, since the last meeting, this original price, uh, total price came in at, can't see that from here, but four hundred ninety-four thousand, I believe, uh, that included taking the line across the road from the lift station over to Van Wirt.
This, this is the one that we were gonna shut downstream several years, that we weren't gonna do the sewer line.
My question is, is it illegal for that to be operated by the city when it's only maintaining that small amount of area and we're not adding anything onto it until we decide down the road, we wanna expand sewer out that area, and we could gradually spend the money on the line, we could budget for it, plan for it, is it illegal for us to do that?
To do what, take ownership of it?
Mm-hmm.
I guess that would be-
Based on, based on the condition it's in right now, is it illegal?
I think we would probably get in trouble with, with the state on that, but I can't, I'd have to talk with them and have to confirm that.
That's what I'd like to know, because basically what I feel like we're getting is, I'm not saying, an opinion, people have different opinions on whether we should do this or not.
Right.
But I don't, never mind.
Uh, could we cut-
There's some things I better not say.
Uh, we weren't- I can give you a recent example of when I was with the state, uh, on the drinking water side. A lot of times, uh, communities in the county, you'd have some development that happened, uh, developers would put in a subdivision, put a water system in, et cetera. Uh, a lot of times, they weren't up to snuff, and so the city, once they finally got trunk lines out there and stuff, they, they had to have those brought up to, up to, up to their specifications, or they didn't accept them. Uh, and you, and, and, and if there was an inspection that happened, and you went in there and, and took a look at all that, and it was not following your regulations, because these specifications that we have, part of the reason that we have them is because they are mirroring the requirements that the state has wanted the individual municipalities to put in for consistency of, of their utility overall, so.
This, this lift station was planned about ten years ago, when they built the new building, and it wasn't really that the city was gonna take over the lift station, why couldn't we hire Crossing Sons who's maintaining it for the seventeen, eighteen hundred dollars a year to continue maintaining the station, since they're already doing it?
Who owns it?
Who owns the station? The church?
Yeah, I mean, who's gonna own it in that case, because we can't probably be maintaining something that belongs to a private entity.
How about it, Mr. City Attorney, is there any way to, um, have that transferred?
To have the tran, ownership transferred to the city?
And, and have, and us, the city, hire Crossing Sons to maintain it, rather than trying to get into, this thing had to have been approved when it was put in.
True. I mean, it, it was approved for the First Baptist Church, because it's there and it's been operational for-
Yeah.
-ten years or so. Well, and, and there's probably, I will say probably, because, you know, until I, until y'all decide what you wanna try and do, but probably there is some way that you can work, could be able to work it out, so that, uh, either the city could take over the lines, which, as I'm hearing, we'd be taking over substandard lines that don't meet our own, uh, our own restrictions, uh, or could we enter into some type of agreement with the church whereby, in return for, as consideration for something that they have given to us, you pay, pay them through, uh, the form of a sum of money to maintain those lift stations. I'd say all those are possibilities.
Yeah. They've invested a hundred and sixty grand plus a little in the heart house, and they wanted to eat it over to us, but they expect something in return.
Well, I, I missed part of the session when this was originally discussed. I wanna know, who, whose idea was it to run the line? Whose idea was it? And can somebody answer that for me? Because my understanding of getting the facts after the case was that it was a win-win, it was gonna, the church had moved the heart house, had donated this property, um, I was under the assumption that they wanted this line. They don't want a line, they wanted to tap into the line.
Right.
So-
They didn't suggest they run it, the sewer line would be run.
Whose idea was that we run that line across their property that was gonna be a win-win for them and us?
I'm sure it's gonna be a, he said, she said, but the-
It's not he said, she said, because, um, I was in the meeting, uh, this is, uh, so there was a meeting executive session, so what I'm about to, to disclose was not an executive session. Um, at the time, Janet Hyde was here at the city, uh, she, uh, was community development director, she had called a meeting, um, of the church and, um, uh, the folks that were organizing, um, and, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we're, we're organizing to save the heart house, um, which is now the Villa Rica Area Historical Society Incorporated. Okay. So, um, during that meeting, there was, uh, representatives in there, uh, from the Historic Preservation Commission as well, and, um, um, I, I'm not sure what the purpose originally was the meeting, I just happened to be in City Hall, um, it was held, I think, about six o'clock, give or take, that evening. Um, uh, I walked from my office over to what I call the blue room, and saw everyone in and said, hm, hm, might as well sit in on here and see what's going on. Um, uh, there was some discussion about the needs of the church, the needs of the society, they were abouting different ideas, um, and during that conversation, um, the church had, um, stated that, that, you know, they were doing development, um, and that ultimately they were going to have to tie into sewer somewhere. Um, it, it, uh, the, the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, um, had said, hey, maybe we need to be looking at this sort of a little different, you know, the church had offered to move the church, the house, in fact, the church had said, you know, we can move it to the back of the property until you all find a home for it. Um, the backside of the, uh, property is mostly all, um, a floodplain, um, and, um, uh, so the chair had, um, as I recollect, um, had said, hey, um, suppose, um, uh, you move that house, you said you were gonna move it to the back, how about you move it to the back of the corner of the house, uh, to the property, um, and, um, uh, you look at a swap with the, um, uh, you know, donate the, uh, the, the land, um, and therefore, uh, you'd be, the house would have a permanent, you know, location. Um, uh, then the conversation came about, you know, obviously there's a value or donation to that. Um, uh, I had, um, said, well, I do know that we have sewer over here on, uh, on, on our one subdivision, suppose we were to, um, uh, you know, you all allow the city to come across that property, um, and we sort of drew a straight line, said, suppose we were to come across that with sewer, um, because some conversation came up, there are no utilities over there, that there would be no utilities for the church, uh, for the house. Um, uh, one of the members of the church, um, uh, picked up the phone, because the church doesn't own all the land, made a phone call, um, to, uh, one of the property owners, uh, which was Jeff Matthews, um, closed his flip phone, and, and as I recollect, said, you know, okay, that's done, um, he's given permission. And I said, well, of course, we'd have to, you know, get easements and things like that in agreement. Um, so, the, the consent, conceptual plan was, if the, uh, uh, house was moved to the back of the property, um, then if the, um, land was donated to the city, um, and then potentially, city runs sewer across there, which would get a sewer out to Van Wirt Road, and then return the house could go to, uh, the Historic Society, then potentially it would be a win-win for everybody. Um, uh, I said, I would go ahead, based on everyone's agreement, let me take it to council and see what they think about it. Um, y'all had an executive session, some of you were party, some of you weren't, some of the players have now changed. Um, uh, leading up to that, um, uh, there was a council member who had come and visited me, um, and asked me what he thought the, um, uh, sewer might cost, and, and I said, I don't really know, I'm gonna gauge it based on, um, uh, what it costs to run sewer down sixty, water down sixty-one from Hell Road all the way to the library, so it's a ballpark, you know, maybe of this, I, I don't know. Um, right before we went into executive session, I'd gotten a correspondence from a company that was Sun West Properties, I believe it was. At the time, I didn't know that it was actually connected to one of the property owners, um, who then put a value on the house, um, and the property. Um, that's where this figure has been banted around. Um, when the agreement, uh, was drawn up, there were some legal questions that came in that, um, uh, that, that, that the city attorney and I had back and forth about, could we even pull this deal off, as we even discussed, um, in principle about it, which is, city would take the donation of the property, um, the, the society would take the house, and the city attorney said, you know, you need to own the house, you need to own the property. Um, that started to cause some angst, um, and then there was other conversations as different versions of the agreement came along. Um, I know that the society had raised their hand, said, well, you know, who's gonna maintain the property, how are we gonna get water, utility, power, things like that? Um, so, um, we were getting, so, so we had, um, at least two meetings of the society and the church with me and the city attorney present. At both of those meetings, um, we started off with the meeting to, to make it very clear to all parties that were there, no agreement has been etched yet. This is still, you know, pie in the sky, trying to resolve, to meet the needs of everybody, um, and that, uh, until the council lowers its gavel, no agreement. Does everyone on the same page? And, and you got your city attorney here, he was at the head table on both, to my remembrance, that's, that's, everyone's like, yep, we're on the same page here, we know we're trying to work to an endgame. Um, once we got, um, the most recent iteration of the agreement, and it was put on the consent agenda, um, uh, I was being pushed, hey, we gotta get that attachment, gotta get that attachment, which was the critical part, which was the engineering. We'd been asking the church, okay, let's get the engineering for where the sewer route's gonna go. When the plans were, uh, dropped off, we had a meeting, um, I think the Wednesday before your Tuesday, um, uh, meeting, as I recall. Um, I think we got Wednesday, um, we talked about it in a Thursday work session. Uh, my recollection was that at that point, I looked at the plans and was like, whoa! Um, you know, me drawing something on a piece of paper across versus what the engineering is two different things, I'm not a PE, pie in the sky, um, and, um, uh, they'd mentioned that there's possible rock, we had elevations issues, things like that, that's what PEs do, that's what professional engineers do. So, based on that, I said, okay, we took it to, um, uh, the council that Thursday, um, I gave the public works, um, a, a directive to go out and, um, uh, put a cost estimate attached to this, so that we can get it to the council, so that when they decide to vote on it on Tuesday, they know what the cost is. Soon as I got the cost, I looked at it, in fact, um, Councilman Best just happened to be in City Hall, I printed it out, I went and handed it to him, I said, the rest of the council's getting this via email, um, Councilman Best, you know, we print out his email, so everybody got it pretty much at the same time. Um, and then when they had the, the council meeting on Tuesday, that's when it got yanked for further, uh, conversation. So, that is sort of, you know, there is no agreement, there's never been agreement, we've always tried to work, we've looked at multiple scenarios, Mayor Protem and I, I mean, we pulled every site in the city potential, I remember we, we, we had actually gone out to every site, trying to find a location, so it's always been in principle.
Okay, so, the answer to the question is, you came up with the, the idea for the sewer line?
That was me, yep.
Okay. Then, why can't we, okay, the church has done, they know we're trying to work toward a, we're trying to find a place to come to.
Mm-hmm.
They've done everything they can do at this point. Um, we need to figure out our part of it, we have found that the one part that was run by is way too expensive, and we're not doing it, at least not now, but, I imagine, maybe they'll let us in the future, still maybe run across there, and they can tap in, because that will be to their advantage, maybe EPD understands if we take on a station temporarily that we are gonna run something out there, we're gonna upgrade things, but we don't have the money to do it all now, and that there's a way for us to meet our part of receiving those four acres and everything, and yet we don't have to spend all that money at one time.
My suggestion? Just buy the land. Just buy the land, you got, you know, the, the council wanted to save the house, or at least, of course, the majority of the council at the time wanted to save the house. Buy the land.
Hey, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the property and the house, could it cost them forty, cost them fifty thousand dollars to move the house?
Well, I think some of that, even, they were gonna pay to demol, they were gonna have to pay a certain amount of money to even demolish it and-
Twenty-five thousand they had allowed for.
What was it, something with the asbestos, so, there's a certain amount they would've had to absorb anyway.
They, they were into it for twenty-five thousand to-
But at least for discussions, any other, uh, any other ideas? So, we don't do this all day and we actually get onto the budget?
Between the existing church and the, and the lift station, what's the size of the pipe? Between the existing church and the lift station, what's the size of the pipe?
Sewer line.
Three-inch force main.
I believe you'll look, and it's gonna be six to ten, is that, is that what you realized, Mr. Croft?
It's six to eight on the line coming into the lift station.
Yeah, from the church to the lift station.
From the church to the lift station, not the new church, but from the church to the lift station. Uh, why can't you actually take a line from the new church, pump it into that line, into the lift station, for the time being, until, basically, we can get money to put sewer line in? It don't, EPD, as, they've obviously said yes to it ten years ago, or it wouldn't be there. Uh, the addition to any kind of, of, um, more material into that sewer line- The addition to any kind of, of more material into that sewer line, being ten or six to ten inches, twelve inches even, allows that to flow to the lift station. The lift station may have to work a little more in timeframe, but it's still getting to where it needs to go and, and out of the way. And the church is out of the lift station business, the city is, is what they want is, is to be able to run sewer line across that at some time. And, and we're all back where we need to be.
Well, the one thing I think basically we need to cover, we do need to communicate with EPD because they don't necessarily look at it the way it's described. Yeah, they might've approved some things back ten years ago, but if they see this as an extension of our existing system, they may put us through the whole process again. Just like when we talked about the well at the last meeting. When you get past a certain point in time and you have to go back to them, it, it, it's like you, you start the clock over and you have to go through the hoops that they have you go through until they approve it the next go around. If they see it as an extension of our system, we may fall into that, I don't know.
Lift station is a hundred and fifty gallon capacity and it'll only operate at fifty percent of the capacity. It, it has the capacity for a lot more and it only runs two or three times during the day, because, except on Sunday. Sunday's the busy day and it might run several more times. It's not a highly-run lift station.
Well, I, I have a little bit of conflicting information about the pumpage in that lift station. We talked with Flight the other day.
Okay.
That pump, about sixty-five to seventy gallons per minute, you have a lead and lag pump. Those stations are not necessarily designed with both pumps running all the time. It might give you the one thirty, one fifty if they're pumping in tandem.
They're not running all the time, it's only three or four times a day, so that's not all the time.
But I think with a, with a head pressure there and the output of that pump, I think we were told that probably the max they could get out of it was eighty gallons per minute. And we were told that by Flight the other day. John, can you corroborate that?
Yeah, just if you're, if you're only running a pump, yeah, one pump, you're probably doing eighty, both pumps probably just a hundred and sixty. I've worked on that station and the one day I worked on it, it was a real busy day, it was back during Christmas, and they were getting all this stuff ready, lots of the restrooms were really being used, and they had kids in there doing the place. And that station, the whole eight hours I was there while I was working on it, only came on twice.
Oh, it's not a high-operating pump?
Not a high-operating pump.
And it's often leading pumps between two pumps?
Right.
And there are low-cost pumps too, and you can have them overhauled or you can buy new ones.
Well, you know, the other thing too, I know he, he mentioned, Tony mentioned three-point-eight horsepower. Those particular models have, have gone out. So you can't, you can't buy them from Flight anymore, and that's what we were told. However, they expect another one that's pretty close to the design parameters of that. And I actually had it on one of these slides here.
I just put the opposite one in on another station.
Yeah.
Not, not here in the region, but it's in Atlanta.
Yeah.
And it's really close, the, it's actually more efficient.
It was a higher horsepower, we, I think it was a five, what, what they sent us was like a five-point something.
They still make the version of the three-point-eight, but it's now got a different name. But I just, I just put that in, but it looks like a couple months.
Yeah, and I, I, I do have the pump curve and everything on these slides of that pump. The good news is a brand-new pump that they have replaced that with, the newest model, is four thousand dollars. So again, the cost is pretty close to what you had originally described.
So do we need to beat this anymore today?
I don't know.
I mean, is there any more information that we
Well, I guess what we need to do is, we were trying, no, we're not gonna vote, but we were gonna come up with our proposal to the church, since they've done their part, what are we gonna do? That was, we gotta change the MOU to reflect that for the work session coming up, December the first.
It would seem to me, the, the plan that's being advanced is that we just accept the existing church station as is, to which there should theoretically be no cost. But from listening to our expert staff analysis, there is a cost instead of no cost. And somehow we gotta confirm, because that's what got us into this problem, is not knowing the cost. We need to confirm what the cost, actual cost would be and, and whether or not this plan could even be done. If, if the EPD is gonna be a decision-maker in whether it can be done or not be done, we better find that out ahead of time, because otherwise we're making another promise that, or advancing an idea that, that, that we can't go through with, so.
So what do we need to do, Mr. City Manager, to find that out?
Well, Pete's here, he's, he's done his research.
I can certainly make some calls.
You know, I, I wanna make two things very, very clear for the record. The church always said that it would move that house to a temporary location on its property. And it did, back to the acreage, working towards what was potential agreement. So, so that's number one. The second thing is, the church made the decision not to demolish it. The city has no authority as to whether or not they demolish that house or not. You know, they, they did so because of the media scrutiny that you had mentioned earlier. So the house is on that land, the church really is in the driver's seat as to, you know, ultimately the council can make a decision on what it thinks is in the best interest of, of the taxpayers and the, the city as a whole. And, and, and the end goal, staff has always understood it, was the consensus of the council was to try to save the Harthouse. The Harthouse has been saved, whatever agreement you come up with. But my public works director, you know, has, has attached cost, he's investigated that lift station, and he's here to answer any questions that the council has regarding cost or long-term. And the engineer that the city hired, Mr. Bass, is here. And he can answer any questions as well, and he's further investigated it based on discussion from the last meeting.
We need an answer from EPD and we need to make sure that they have the accurate facts about the situation of what we're planning to do and what, what the condition of the pump is and the way it's going to be used and that it's temporary in nature until we can extend a line out there. You know, that's the way I feel about it.
Yeah, and we need that
We need that answer.
We need that answer and we need that before the work session so that we can discuss it.
And it needs to be based on the accurate facts of the way that pump is going to be used now. That's all I have to say.
The lift station is not regulated at this point by anybody, except other, I guess, by anybody.
I don't know if anybody's been knocking on the church's door and asking questions about it, or if you've had to send anything to them about the operation.
The church, the church hired his company, Crossing Sons, to maintain. So he knows more about it than actually the church does.
Every time we clean the station, we don't just clean it, we, we do it after all, the pumps. We check out the pass group, we check everything out, make sure it's working right, clean the hose, pull it out, run the pumps, handle the station, do barriers to make sure it's working fine at the time. At the next cleaning, it's actually due in February, and the last time we cleaned it at that time, the station was working fine.
What's the age of the pumps?
Those pumps, I, I believe are the original, so they're gonna be close to our old ones. I've never replaced them.
Pete, Peter, I just wanted to ask a question and I got a couple of comments I wanna make, but what I hear you saying is that your fear is that if we take that pump over as a city, then we're gonna be subject to EPD regulations that the church was not subject to, is that correct?
Possibly.
And that's what we're gonna try to find out. You know, I appreciate y'all calling me up here to be a part of this.
We didn't say you could talk.
Okay, I'll turn it off.
That cost you dearly, you let us pay the price.
You, you will all find out, and most of my friends know, if, if you don't wanna know my opinion, then don't ask the question, because I'm gonna tell you what my opinion is. It seems to me that there were a number of mistakes that were made in this transition action from the start. And the church, whether we believe it or not, the church feels like they upheld their side of the bargain. And now they're waiting on the city to do something. And I think, you know, to cut to the chase here, I think we need to know what the EPD is gonna do, if anything, and then what the cost is gonna be to upgrade that lift station, if any.
If needed.
If needed, or if required. And then we move forward as a city. I will tell you, as the incoming mayor, that I think we set bad precedent when we began to take over lift stations on private property. And that's something I think that we need to really look at before we close this deal.
Unless we date it, unless it's dated over to a shenanigans.
Well, I, you know, how many lift stations do we already have, Pete? I know we have
We've got somewhere in there with thirty-seven, forty.
And there's probably just as many on private property out there in the city. And I don't wanna start a stampede on the city, everybody that lives in a subdivision wanting the city to take over their, their lift station.
And that's why I have the slide up there for our design and now on construction standards, because, you know, we have to be careful we don't set a precedent.
Absolutely.
But, but there is the other half of the bargain. The Harthouse was moved, and somewhere along the way, they agreed that they could move it to the, this four acres and it would have a location, a permanent location. Four-acre piece of land and a Harthouse, of which it is on there with a foundation solidly. So now you have a Harthouse on four acres, the four acres could be designed, you know, developed as a park. And then if someone wants to save the Harthouse, they're gonna have to come up with a lot of money.
Nobody is more of a proponent than, than saving history than I am. Nor am I in favor of the city taxpayers taking on the expense that, that they didn't create.
I just, the church thought, apparently thought they had a deal, that's why they went head-on and moved the house at their expense. So now
Yeah. I don't think the church did anything wrong.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, you know, if we make mistakes, just understand that we're passing those on to the taxpayers to pay.
Right. And that's why we came up with what we thought was a much lower cost, almost no cost to the city. If we could find a way around the lift station deal, then it would cost the city hardly
And that's the sixty-four thousand dollars is what the almost is.
Right. That's what we gotta find out. What's the cost?
All right, Pete, do you, for the purpose of council, do you wanna reiterate what you understand the council needs for its December first meeting so that it can move this pendulum forward?
I think so. I think what I heard was need to get some input from EPD to see how they view this, whether this is an extension of our system and we are gonna be, be holding to them to do certain things that will be costly, or whether we can take this over and operate it as it is currently designed with the capacity that it currently has for the needs of the church and the new construction on that property. Is that correct?
That sounds correct to me. Anyone in agreement? Okay, you have marching directions, or orders, or whatever you wanna call them. And we can finally move on to that Harthouse. Well, we'll take public comments at the end. Now we gotta finish our agenda here. We gotta... The next item of all business is the North Avenue. The council previously abandoned and later sold a portion of North Avenue from Dallas Highway South to Old Stone Road to accommodate the expansion of the hospital. It's left two stretches of North Avenue that are no longer contiguous. They're requested by interim mayor, Marchman, that portion from Dallas Highway to North to Old Town Road be named Jay Crowder Street. Property tax records showed two residential parcels whose address would be affected. Did we talk to those two residents, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, the interim mayor and myself went out, we visited the, and, and reconfirmed that there's only two parcels that are affected with North Avenue addresses. One of them is occupied by a tenant, the other is by a property owner. We spoke both of those. And then I followed up today with the property owner of the one that has a tenant. Both property owners are in agreement that the city can move forward with renaming that street. I told them that once I knew the direction of the council, I'd follow up with a letter to them and that most likely there would be a dedication in the street, given the significance of Mr. Crowder. And that, in fact, one of the property owners used to work in the cafeteria at the school and, and recalls Mr. Crowder. So, so both are in agreement and are acceptable to the proposal from the city.
Any questions from the council?
No, probably just a comment. I did get a little bit of feedback from a few citizens and it was this, there was the recommendation that when we do name roads, we might wanna consider naming roads after people that are no longer with us, because sometimes when you name roads after people that are still living, you never know what they're gonna do the rest of their life. And you have a road named after them. The other is that we also maybe even researched, somebody sent me a link and I failed to send it to y'all yet. But I will, with the biography of a woman who is quite famous and contributed quite a bit, just by Googling famous people from Villa Rook, and I can't even name her right now, I have it at home, I'll send it to you, but something we might wanna consider for the future when we do do this. You know, maybe research it a little bit more expansive. And certainly I don't have any problem with Jay Crowder. I mean, I know he's done some, he not only is from our community, but he's also come back to give back to the community with the back-to-school book bags and supplies and things for the children, which is very nice.
And he's very much still alive.
Yes.
As of yesterday, yes, I knew that much. I don't know about today.
Boston Celtics say he's alive.
It's not a big issue.
No more questions on that one, that's, that's our whole business. On to the new business, while we, this meeting was really set up, was we're gonna review and see what we can do with the budget. Now, we don't have the whole council here, we don't have our fourth ward for council member yet. So we'll still have to do what we got. We got our mayor-elect. Okay, how do you wanna start this on the budget, Mr. Manager?
What'd you say?
I said, how, how do you wanna carry forth on the budget?
Well, I mean, from the staff side, we've had two full committee meetings, so at this point, it's a workshop, so it's really driven by the council to ask questions and, you know, give direction to staff.
All right. Would you like to start?
I do, I have a que, um, I have a question, page eleven, when it talks about how we're gonna use the SPOLOST. And I had forgotten but was made re-aware that it can be used for debt service. Here's the thing, and I don't know this, because this goes back to, I'm trying to think, the year we're pulling the SPOLOST from. Usually you have to say what you're gonna use the SPOLOST dollars for. We used to be real specific, and then we found out sometime that's a real disadvantage, because if it comes up that you have said when you passed it with the people, oh, we're gonna do such and such, it ends up, you can't do that, you can't use the dollars elsewhere. So a lot of times now we'll say, we're gonna use the SPOLOST dollars for road improvements and sidewalks. And it doesn't narrow it down to we have to do this road or that road. Is there, can we use those SPOLOST dollars for debt reduction? Was it worded that way in the SPOLOST that passed, is that an issue?
Your city attorney will confer, because we actually went back to the original intergovernmental agreements with county. And there was percentage agreement of how they would divvy up the money, but there were not buckets established in the agreement. So yes, if the council so chooses, it can allocate those funds to debt service.
I'm waiting for you to know.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not, there, there is a requirement that if you're going to use SPOLOST funds to fund pre-existing debt, that does need to be in the original advertisement to the public and, you know, we'll need, I don't know.
Oh.
I'll go back and look.
Okay, so we need, we need to know that, right? Because it would be illegal otherwise? Don't wanna do anything illegal.
Let me look at that.
Yeah.
The, the debt that you're talking about is not bonded indebtedness. I mean, that, that's, the general prohibition is that you cannot use SPOLOST funds to retire bonded indebtedness without seeking permission from the voters to do so. What, what is the debt that you're referring to?
Is that not what it is? Right here. Here, you can take my whole book.
The way that's worded, yes, that, that is bonded indebtedness right there. And I would question And I would question whether or not SPOLOST funds could be used to retire bonded indebtedness.
I didn't, I don't know. That's why I was asking.
Well, we definitely need to take a look at that to be sure about it.
Because I know even before I was on council and I was sitting out there and they used to say you could only do the things you said. And that's why most of the local governments, including the county, has got a little bit more vague. Not to abuse the citizens, but like I said, sometimes you can't do a particular project and you were locked into funding just that project.
Sarah, can you check that agreement? I think you have access to it, correct?
The way our, our, the language in our SPOLOST proposal when it was voted on was as, I don't want to say vague is not the correct word, but it was as expansive as it could be to give us flexibility in order to use the funds as the city saw fit. But you are correct that the issue of paying off bonded indebtedness, it needs to be looked at very carefully.
Okay.
Before we do it.
Okay. Since we're on page eleven, I've got one item here. I did some research on the average pay increases for this year. It turned out to be three percent. And the projected pay increases for next year turned out to be three percent. I would object to the five percent pay increases and I think it ought to be around three percent. That's one item. The other one is the one right below it on health insurance. If we had a twenty-three percent increase, are we planning to rebid the health insurance? That sounds substantial. And we not?
I'll address both questions, sir. So the first one is when you look at the raises that were approved in the 2016, that was part of pay parity. So there's a second part of pay parity that was budgeted for, for year two of what was proposed originally as a year, a five-year plan. In year one, the goal was to get every single person up to the minimum pay scale so that by December thirty-first of this year, every single employee would have been elevated to the absolute minimum pay scale. And/or if they were already on the pay scale, then they were eligible for a raise. So the, the average factor of going across the board. I think last year you asked for a spreadsheet and it showed every single employee and what their percentage. In fact, some of the employees actually saw double-digit increases in order to get them so that they were actually finally making the minimum entry level for the positions they were on. The second, in year two, it is proposed to do a pay parity study so that we can actually re-benchmark and get the latest and greatest pay scale for all current employees. Because the one that we're operating off of is about eight years old now. So in the budget, it's actually proposed to do that. And then in years two, three, four, and five, by budgeting at five percent, that allows us then to give some employees based on obviously performance, but at the same point, trying to get them more in line with what they are supposed to be paid based on prevailing a wage that takes into account their position, the pay scale for which that position is, their years of service, their education, and then of course their overall performance. With regards to the healthcare, this is bidded out every year. The twenty-two point nine percent that the city was most recently hit with is actually pretty much on par with where other cities are getting hit. I've seen some cities as high as thirty to thirty-five percent. Our broker plans to go back out to market for January one. When, when our broker came and spoke to the council, he had stated that we had what was called a hot year. So basically, as I recollect, for every dollar that the city paid in premiums, our insurer paid out a dollar eighteen. We usually track at about an eighty-six percent. So what that means is that for every dollar we pay our healthcare provider, we normally have eighty-six cents on the dollar in healthcare claims. But because the overall pool had substantial claims, we had a hot year. And therefore, we got hit with a very large increase. We are not on a calendar year. We actually, our year starts, I believe, September first. So therefore, in retrospect, we had about a three hundred thousand dollar hit. By allowing time to get by, our provider is going to try to go out to market again and see whether or not by around the first of the year, we can lower our overall premiums. They'll continue to work for us. But these premiums are very much in line with what other cities across the state are seeing.
So if I get what you're saying, we may or may not have that increase once they go back out in January. But chances are, there's a good chance we will because this seems to be in line with what is happening to everybody.
Well, it's not just because it's happening to everybody. There are some factors out there in the healthcare market that is affecting. For instance, even the whole Obamacare, if you will, the, you know, HAA is being affected because of a lot of consolidation with some of the large providers. With us, of course, we have a pool of employees. If you have a cancer in that pool or if you have, you know, a premature baby or something like that, all of these add up to sort of like marks against you. It really comes down to how many claims in dollars are we hitting the bottom line? And our insurer then evaluates us based on that. And you go out to market. There were a couple of insurers based on our hot year that would not even bid on the insurance for the city. So the broker does the best that they can. It's made a presentation to the council, showed you why it was a hot year. As time goes on, we try to, it's almost like a moving clock. You know, you lose a month here, then you lose another month. And hopefully, those bad claims are no longer on the dartboard that they're bidding on, if you will. It's almost like your auto insurance, you know? You know, as soon as that seven-year or ten-year or whatever that record is gets clear, you know, your insurance company is like, okay, you haven't had any, you know, speeding tickets in seven years or three years. You know, we'll lower your rate. And so, 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 so folks obviously know the interim mayor has arrived and she's in sunglasses. And it's only because her eyes are affected. I don't want anyone to think that she's been over there drinking or anything. Everyone that knows our interim mayor knows that's not the case.
That was last night, wasn't she?
Yeah, she had a bad night last night, drinking too much lemonade. So is that answered? Does that help? So we'll continue just as we have. I mean, we've already talked to the broker. We know we're going to try to go back out, but we had to allow enough time to elapse, hoping that some of those things that hit the bottom line are in our rearview mirror.
So we bid out, or our broker bids out the insurance companies. Do we bid out the broker?
In this case, the broker is selected as an arm of the staff, as an administrative position for professional services. So no, that we're not paying the broker. The city pays the broker nothing. The brokers make their money off of the actual bottom line claim. This particular broker has come to us and his record speaks for itself. He's actually saved the city a substantial amount and has negotiated very aggressively for us. So overall, despite all of these increases, he has saved us in multiple areas while at the same time has increased some of the services. So for instance, throughout the year, we've sent communications to the council and staff saying, you know, these are things that your broker, you know, has done for us so that they see overall where our benefits are. The broker's also looked at potentially going self-insured, but with such a hot year, we couldn't even consider that.
So the council was involved in the selection of the broker?
No.
Okay. Is that, is that a concern?
No, but while you're up here and talking, I just wanted to be sure. Because I was joking with you earlier. I was just checking with Mr. Mecklen here, who tries to keep us out of trouble and asked him, can you go ahead? I mean, you're elect without being sworn in, can you participate? And he says, as long as we ask you to. So if y'all are okay with it, we might as well have who is.
Let him get some.
Our mayor. Be able to participate. No, we didn't select. And when you get off that topic, let me know because I have a question about the pay parity survey.
Well, I think one of the things that I heard City Manager say was that we are basically our pool, just the city employee, employees here in Villa Rook. Is that correct?
Correct.
Have we looked, in the past, I know when I was here before, we were in a pool of employees made up of all the GMA. Did we look at that as well? Did our broker look at that?
Yes. Yes, they actually bid annually and it's not even close.
How about that? Because I know with the school system, a lot of times, that's why they were large. And that's why a lot of times they could get the better deal. So it doesn't work for us or it works sometime and not other years. So should we still check on it?
There is some insurance, like we stay with them on Germa, for instance, because no one else has been able to undercut. But on other services, no, we give them the same opportunity to bid in and doesn't even come close. Part of it is, you know, there are, when you, when you look at the pool, the pool continues to age. And the larger pool also has a lot of law enforcement. We're very fortunate here that we don't have a fire department and our police department has a very low threshold. That's why we do all this training. So the fact that, you know, they're not out there involved in shootings all the time. So every little factor, in fact, there is data that comes back to us that shows what our factorization is on certain areas. So for instance, this year, every employee has had to go through driver training. Because what's hurt us on, for instance, the liability side was, you know, distracted driving and rear-ending folks. On the health side, we have no control over that. So what we've done this year is in order to try to help with the rates, we implemented through the provider, the tobacco-free. And if you're going to be a tobacco user, it's going to hit you very hard in the pocketbook. So we're sort of late in the game. We also now mandate that everybody goes through our peak health program. So we have instituted aggressively the wellness program. So we're doing what we can legally and socially to try to get the staff healthier, if you will, to, you know, ultimately come off these numbers. Because from a, from a policy standpoint, right now, the insured employee doesn't pay anything out of their pocket as long as they're tobacco-free.
Okay. We have really run this one into the ground. Elmo, we need to hear from Councilman Best. He hasn't had a chance yet.
I'm just holding on.
Let me provide you with one answer to the question that Councilwoman McPherson raised. And that Sarah did pull up the agreement on our SPOLOST funds. And it does specifically state that we could use those funds to retire bonded indebtedness on the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I did hear us say that the council is old and the police department is young.
I caught that too.
I mean, is that what you?
An aging pool, I think it was.
No, I was talking about, I'm sorry, the GMA pool. The GMA pool. I'm sorry. You know, sometimes I say things, but I don't always know what I say and I have to go home and watch myself. But I'm sorry, I was referring to the GMA pool as an aging pool. People love to go to work for government and stay working for government until they retire. And that's not always a good thing in a pool.
I guess you have, you probably have not taken into account a new healthcare system is coming.
Well, and it all might have to be reconsidered.
It was discussed this morning, in fact. And they said, wait about a year, let's see what's going to happen, especially in response to the most recent election that happened Tuesday, was it?
It was Tuesday.
You know, I was, I was really misspoke when I said the police department is young. I should have said some of the police department is young.
Yeah.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. The chief's younger than me. Aren't you younger than me?
Okay.
You're older than me?
Let's get on with the question.
While Berlin is pausing, on this pay parity.
Yes.
This is the confusion I'm having on this.
Okay, please.
Okay. Because I've thought about this a little bit more. Okay, you're saying ours is eight years old. So we need to, and I want to know what it's going to cost to have another one done. And this is why. We just made a five-year plan and we're told to institute this pay increase of five percent that's based on the eight-year-old plan that we are now going to use five years out. But now we're going to pay for another survey so that we can change it all again?
Okay.
I don't understand why we should have to do another survey at this point if we made a five-year plan based on the one we have.
Okay. The five-year plan is a pay parity based on the pay scale that's in place right now. All right? So you take an eight-year plan. It's benchmarked according to the CPI. Okay? So that locks you into, this is the minimum entry salary. So if you tell folks that if you're going to be out and be a sanitation technician, for instance, and the minimum entry's pay for that position is eleven dollars and you are hiring people in at no less than eleven, but yet you have people making eight or nine or ten dollars, obviously, it's a red flag. So, so you, you take a pay scale that was never implemented in this city. Y'all had this plan done, not y'all, but I'm saying y'all, like the Royal City.
But we started implementing it last year.
Exactly. So this was done. And so when I came here, the first thing I asked about was, where's the job descriptions? Where are your pay scale? You know, where's all this? And we dusted off this document that was in a drawer that was never implemented. So you had people all over, it was almost like a scatter plot as to what people were making or how they're making. So we knew that in order to move the city forward, to in order to recruit and maintain good, solid employees, so hopefully they wouldn't like leave and go elsewhere because you've got a huge investment into them, that you start to hire them. So every employee that's been hired on my watch as City Manager has always been hired on the pay scale. Then you have to address existing employees so that you don't cause a huge fiasco and morale issues. So you have to go to them and explain to the employees what you're doing, how you're doing it, why you're doing it, and then get buy-in from the council. So in year one, what you did in 2016 was you said the following. We budgeted collectively that in year one, if you had a minimum entry of eleven dollars, but you were making less than that, when your anniversary date came up and then you were evaluated, you were automatically moved to whatever that minimum entry was. No more, no less.
That's based on the eight-year-old plan.
Correct. It's not an eight-year-old plan. It's an eight-year-old pay scale.
Okay. That we just made a, last year, with y'all doing the budget, we made a five-year plan based on it.
A five-year-old plan on the pay scale. But think about this.
Okay.
I'm going to ask you a question.
No, 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 don't tell me too much. How much is it going to cost for the new one?
The question, it's in the budget lineup.
We're now going to throw out the next four years of the five-year plan and start working off a new one.
No. It is how much? It's fifteen thousand to do the pay scale in order to benchmark all salaries across the board. All right. So I'm going to ask a question because I actually don't know the answer, okay? And so don't, don't take this wrong. Have you ever worked? Ever had a full-time job?
No.
Okay. You did, good. Right answer. Okay. All right. So I'm going to, let's pretend that you were making twenty-five dollars an hour at your job, okay? And you found out as an employee that, you know, that you were operating off of a pay scale from eight years ago that's never been dusted off, never been revised, despite cost of living. And you're, you're making the same amount that you were eight years ago that you are now. So the five-year plan is to get folks on the pay scale. The council dictates whether or not you're going to adopt a new pay scale. So the purpose of this is to evaluate everyone's positions, their job descriptions, the pay scale as to where you fall in the pay scale, what the minimum mid-range and maximum salaries are on that, the qualifications for each position. The reason that you do that is the city has evolved a lot in eight years. Positions have evolved and/or changed. The structure of the departments and everything and management level has changed. So you want to make sure that everything's evaluated. Are you even eligible to be an exempt versus an hourly employee? All of that gets done in a. All of that gets done in a pay parity scale. We reached out to local governments to try to find out, has any of these others done it? You'll be setting the trend. The, the answer is no, we couldn't find a local government that's, that, that's benchmarked their pay scales.
I can see.
We arbitrarily raised the police department, for instance, to 38.5 last year. Why? Because you, you thought that that was a good range or because the research showed that it was a good range? At, at some point, you want to be competitive with other governments so that your employees aren't going elsewhere.
Apparently we are because they're not doing scales at all. We're the only one doing it.
Well, I assure you.
You've got reviews during that process of each employee given a review before they consider it for a raise.
Okay.
Are the reviews being done?
All reviews are being done, yes. And I actually review the reviews. In fact, I think I surprise some folks because I do actually mark on those reviews or I make phone calls on the reviews. So yes, the reviews actually come across my desk on all employees.
Okay, Councilman Best, do you have a question? I know.
No.
Nope. Anywhere in the budget?
Oh, lock.
It's your, your question.
Your time.
Go ahead.
All right, who's got the next question?
I've got a question.
Okay.
In the budget this year, there's a request for nine additional new positions, full-time. And I see the, the math and the rate per thousand population and how, and how we arrive at that. My question is, every budget that I've ever been associated with, there's a, there are some kind of paperwork in the budget that says why are these people needed, what are the total costs, what's the start pay, the, you know, I know, I see that range in the, in the budget. What I don't see is a justification for those people. And, you know, as an incoming mayor, I would love to, you know, I'm not saying we don't need those people, I'm not saying we don't need double those people. I'm just saying I would like to see what, you know, what the justification is.
Good question. The CFO will get you a copy during the budget committee meetings. That question came up, there's justification filed on everyone, so she has them, so she'll get you a copy. The committee's already got them, for instance, she's showing them to you.
Yeah, I, I will, I still have a little bit of issue with some of them being a little bit too vague, not enough.
That's fine. Please, let me know and, and I'll get staff to go back to the drawing board, please. Which ones?
What is the total cost of the new employees, just so I would know?
Yeah, I don't think I see any of that put together for us. We'd have to go through and pick them out now, it might be helpful.
What's the cost of an executive assistant?
CFO?
I'll look that up.
Ms. Sarah?
The total cost of all the new requested positions is $206,663. That includes insurance and tax, pension, et cetera. You asked for the executive assistant. Total cost of that position is $69,300. That includes insurance.
Say that again, I'm sorry, wait a second.
Which one was that, the executive assistant?
$69,200, or $300. That includes an estimate of $13,000 for insurance, almost $4,000 of tax, and $2,500 of pension. That's all included in that number. And we didn't, we don't budget on, based on the minimum because you could be bringing in someone with experience. So it's just an estimate, we may not, so.
So Sarah, while you're out there, you, you do a great job on budget presentations and I appreciate that. And one of the things that's on everybody's mind is the enterprise fund and how to balance that out. What's the total deficit we're at right now in the enterprise fund annually?
I have to pull my other presentation, hold on. He, he said 700,000, that's where we are at a negative cash position of 700,000. And as far as the fund balance, the fund balance is not a deficit on the water sewer side, but it's not quite up to where we need to be just at a minimum. And it's our sanitation and solid waste fund that is at a deficit of almost a negative 113,000, I think, in our fund balance.
So we're, we're asking for $206,000 in new employees and we're at a deficit of how much, 113,000?
That's just the fund balance, that's years, that's years of net losses. So we had, we had a loss last year in the water sewer fund of 415,000, that's what hit the books at the end of the year in 2015 from our last audit. In 2014, we only made $64,000, bottom line. So that 206,000 of requested positions is not all in the water sewer side, I can tell you which ones come from the, only two are in the enterprise fund and the total of those is 82,000 on the enterprise fund side.
So for those of you that haven't been here, Sarah, again, does a great job. Basically what we're doing is, is robbing Peter to pay Paul or we're doing a shell game. We're moving money from general fund, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, but we're moving money from the general fund to, to pay for the enterprise fund. And by definition, an enterprise fund is supposed to pay for itself.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go back to the new employees. Captain and administration, that's got to be the chief's request, how much are we paying for him, or here, or her, whoever it might be?
That one was a little vague. We need more detail on that one.
And the chief's here, he can certainly come on up and speak for that position if he'd like to.
I'd like to know what we're going to start paying them at, what it's going to cost us to have them. Obviously, when you add that many new employees, that's a large part of the 2.3 million dollar increase, 10% in the budget from last year.
Okay, I'm sorry, the total I gave earlier of all the new positions can't be right because these are.
Yeah.
The administrative captain is 75,000, that includes all the benefits, 13,000 for insurance, $4,300 for taxes, and almost 3,000 for the pension. And again, we didn't budget up the minimum of, there's, we have a pay scale per position. So we're not budgeting at the bottom of the pay scale because you could be hiring someone with experience, so.
Okay, how about the assistant branch manager of the library, I guess that is?
I'm sorry? Which one?
Assistant branch manager.
Oh.
Looks like it's over at the library.
So some of these are not new positions, they are to bring that person up to 40, to bring them up to a full, no, the assistant branch manager, that is just, we already have that person, it would just be bringing up their salary.
It says requested positions, so.
But it should say new or.
Yeah, it, it'll say like reclassify, let me see which one that is.
If it's a new position, it says requested position, isn't that a new position?
There's a box where they check that either new or an upgrade. So in this case, this person, is she currently a member? So it's a reclass of this person from being a library assistant to being an assistant branch manager. So your only, the only added cost would be the difference in that pay scale.
Do we need an assistant branch manager? We have a manager.
I can't speak to that.
Yes, I was requesting the position. What we did was just an evaluation of going into the new facility and some of the expanded duties that would come or that we're certainly seeking to add on to this particular individual in terms of managerial responsibilities. So that was one of the main reasons for the requested position, or reclass, excuse me.
The biggest issue is also when the branch manager is gone, for whatever reason, that you have a very clear number two person who's trained and ultimately in the position to potentially maybe one day take over as branch library, should, should the current person ever leave or whatever. So in tandem, you always have someone trained and clearly in the line of leadership.
Are they trained in their current title where they would know how to do that?
Absolutely, they acted as the interim.
For how long?
This is actually the second time, they've done it twice.
I would hope we'd have a backup position, person for any of those positions because you never know when somebody's going to be out.
I don't want to pick on the library, but I'm going to just a little bit.
Sure.
In a nice way.
Pick, pick, pick all you want, seriously, this is your opportunity to ask lots of questions.
I want to hear more about a request for additional people when they start looking into the interns and the college students and the things that are available that they can get to help that way. I'd like to hear a little bit more about what's been done on, on that level.
Sure, that's going to absolutely be explored.
Going to be though, that's my question, has it been?
It has been explored. So as an example, West Georgia will certainly have in August, for example, it had their kind of career day where you can seek out individuals to help them gain work experience. So that's something that we continuously look into. So that's certainly something that's always on the table and that we will be undertaking in terms of the positions. Two of the positions are, excuse me, one is a reclass, they're full-time, it'd be changing the position. The other one would be moving someone from a half-time or part-time position to a full-time position. The other, or what would be the third one, is the, a request for a part-time position.
It says two, it says library assistant, part-time, and it says two positions, so two part-time.
One of the part-timers is a.
Two in the front company of the divorce.
Right, so with the half-time, it is, that shouldn't be the change, there was a change of one who is currently part-time to full-time, which may be what represents that, one of those half-times, so adding the other half-time to, to essentially make a full-time. So it's reclassing one to a different position that's already full-time, taking one that is a part-time position, converting them to full-time, and adding a part-time position.
I seem to recall that last year, so, so I'm looking at the net increase in the entire parks, recreation, leisure services, a 2.5 increase, FTE. I know that last year, we had staved off increasing staff in the library, you know, hindsight 2020, we, we were looking at balancing the budget last year, you got a much larger library, like, much larger facility.
Correct.
So there was requested positions last year and what we, we said is, you know, we'll make do in the latter part, you know, when, when the library's supposed to get open. Well hindsight 2020, you know, the library's not open yet, it's going to open, you know, say around the first of the year. So we're sort of back, if you will, to the front door of saying, okay, we had the discussion last year about you're going to need positions to run, you know, much more larger operation library because you're going from, what is it now, five thousand square feet to, to, you know, you're tripling in size, you know, and then some.
That is true, but some, some of that space also is where people just, it's a study room. You know, it doesn't require anybody to work in it. I know we're getting larger. I, I still don't, I'm still not clear on this though, because it says, the assistant library branch manager, that's the, just a reclassify, they're already full-time, but it would be bumping them up to another position as an assistant and then you pay them accordingly. Then I have one that says library assistant, that's a reclassify an existing position, they're going to full-time, from part-time to full-time. Then on the third sheet, it says, library, that's the one I handed over to you just now, where it says two positions in parentheses, so that's two part-time, right?
Two part-time.
Okay. So, so I guess my whole thing is, I, at least for me, I can't speak for anyone else, before we do all that hiring, I'd like to know what's available through those college interns. I just think that would be a really good, fiscally conservative thing to do, so.
Absolutely.
Maybe we can get some feedback on that, but anyway, but thank you, I'm not trying, I'm not really trying to pick on you, I just want to, I don't want to, I don't want to do things we don't have to do.
I had some questions for Vicky before she sits down, unless y'all, I don't want to monopolize anybody else's time, so.
Go ahead.
Okay. Vicky, of course, I was in recreation most of my life, so that's the budget I looked at. And some questions, there is a 443,000, I mean, 443% increase in cleaning services. And it says out in the, in the notes that that's for the library and gold dust. I'm assuming we have left the idea of using inmates to, to clean the buildings up.
What page?
I'm on page, I'm sorry, page 72.
So between the two, the, as it relates to gold dust specifically, they do minimal work in gold dust. What we found is it, it just really wasn't working out in terms of the facility actually being clean. Is that, have been combined? Okay. So it really wasn't working out. So as an example, we would have areas, even if you go into the senior center, that sometimes just based on the nature of the clientele or patrons that come in, there's a lot more cleaning that needs to be done that frankly, the inmates, they really have to get in and get outside. So whether we're in grass cutting season or whatever, the amount of time and attention that goes into cleaning the building, it just was really being neglected. In terms of the library itself, what it looks like is that it's really been combined, what we have to account for at the library is they're going from a 5,000 square foot facility to a 15,000 square foot facility. So maintenance in general, whether you're talking about cleaning or other aspects of it, the cost of that is absolutely going to increase. What we did, the latter part of last year, originally, I'm sure you're aware, there was a vacant position that we just weren't able to successfully get that position filled. And as a result, what I did was look at what was happening in the other departments at the city and we just expanded the cleaning service that all the other departments were using. So that's part of why you see that increase. You know, I think there was, had certainly been some discussion as what direction the city as a whole was going to go as it related to the cleaning service, but that is probably the biggest explanation with that particular shift.
What did it cost us last year or this year to clean gold, gold dust? Because that's included.
Yes.
I'll speak to this too. So far, we have spent almost 14,000 for cleaning on just gold dust and the library, I believe, was almost 7,000. So that line, the column you're seeing on the current budget in that cleaning, cleaning line, the, the original 2016 budget on that was actually zero. What David and I didn't know last year when we were putting together the budget, but the cleaning service had all been posted under contract labor. And so we cut that significantly, not realizing that that was included in the contract labor. So we've had to absorb cleaning service in every department. And you can see I've moved some money this, earlier in the year and I need to move more to cover that. So what you're not seeing is what's been spent this year. So we've already spent 20,000 just in the recreation alone. So it looks like it's going from 7,000 to 38,000, that's not an accurate picture of the true cost.
Vicky, another follow-up question. I would debate that about the inmates, by the way, having worked inmates most of my life, we, we built facilities with inmates here in Villarica, so they can certainly clean restrooms. But I think it's mostly a case of, of the supervisor, I know there were issues, you know, talking to the city manager, there were issues with, with some of the supervisors. But I would like to, like, you know, like for us to look at that. If I'm correct in my math, I think citywide, we pay almost $80,000 for cleaning services on the buildings here.
We pay almost 900 a week, so I think it's closer to 50,000 right now, but the hope is to go out to bid and we, we anticipate that that would be higher next year.
Okay. Well, one key point is, you know, the rec department used to have a, a, additional.
A part-time.
Well, you had the part-time, but you also had one additional inmate crew.
Correct.
And so obviously, as we were getting close to the election, you know, litter in the county became, so, so we lost a inmate crew. You know, I knew that I've relayed to at least one, if not other council members that, you know, once the dust settled in the current election, right now, the, the crew that's on the Douglas County side is. that's on the Douglas County side is restricted to Douglas County and cannot go anywhere else outside Douglas County. So, we're hoping that, you know, the opportunity to go meet with the, uh, the, the new sheriff after the first year, give him a little room to breathe before, uh, we go chat with him. But, but that's very, very critical, because that is one crew that we, we would love to be able to use elsewhere. But right now, 100% isolated there. But, but the larger picture is they are working with less resources, um, over there. And then also, there was also the change in the law with, um, how, uh, probation is done. And, uh, we were competing with other folks, you know, offering three and five hours to one, you know, and vice versa. So, it was almost like, let's make a deal. So, when you looked at the cost of everything, you know, that whole operation of just running the, um, probationers, um, uh, community service, someone called probation, the community service, was like a $100,000 operation. And, um, you know, we're, we're starting to open to new ideas. We do plan, um, I've heard from a lot of the departments, you know, um, I've heard multiple times from the chief, but we do, um, uh, plan to, uh, put the clean service, um, out for a, a competitive bid and hopefully. But the big obstacle that we have is, um, the library is not something, there's, obviously, you go out there, there's, there's, it's not something that even our current crew could clean. So, so it's going to be, um, you know. For what it's worth, I've donated a vacuum to City Hall, um, the last one, you know, died.
And I do have some questions about community service, but while Vicky's still up there. On page 73 of the budget, in contract labor sports, the request is for $40,000. In contract labor programs, it's, it's 105, $115,000. What happened? Because that 40,000, just for the audience, that $40,000 for contract labor sports pays for all the officials, scorekeepers. It, it, I would hate to think the programs would drop that, that much.
No, the, the programs haven't dropped. I think, um, where we initially started with the budget, um, there was a consolidation of contract labor. So, there's some information...
I just split out, she's trying to be nice. This was, um, as you can see, there's no history based on how that split out. So, this was, I mean, we were down to the wire and we had been asked to split it out. So, this is a rough estimate split out, but the hope is, once the budget's passed, you know, we can move money where, where need be. But I think she has a better estimate now.
So, um, last year, and maybe what I can do is certainly, um, just provide a little bit of insight. When you, we have a little bit more detail that we can go in, um, on our side to look into contract labor, to see, um, what is exactly billed. As an example, we did roughly, to date, we had roughly about 64,000. So, I know Sarah doesn't necessarily see all of the detail, but even last year, we went to, I want to say, when I went, uh, in, we did $76,218 on, um, our contract labor sports. If you guys will recall, um, last year at this time, when I brought you information and did a revenue expenditure analysis, I had a very detailed breakout of, um, where the expenses were and how they were broken down according to the sports. So, that's similar to, um, you know, um, like I said, we can go in and we can certainly figure it out. I think that, again, at, when Sarah initially just went in and tried to divide it up, she didn't have quite the level of detail. So, I think that may be more appropriate. I think one of the things that she mentioned that we can certainly go in and, and move the numbers across, but quite frankly, the program is growing and has grown over the last year.
And that, that's a great thing. I lo- I love recreation, obviously. But you said we spent how much to date so far in contract labor sports?
Um, we're, we're roughly, it's up to 64, almost 65 now, and that's not, I mean, we just did basketball sign-ups, so we're certainly will see some additional expenses related to that, just going into basketball season for this year.
Well, Sarah, this is a question for you then, and city manager, should we go ahead and make that budget adjustment now? Realizing that we've already spent, we're what, seven months, eight months into the year? And $40,000 wouldn't even cover what you spent to date.
Do you have the current budget or the next budget?
On the net, on the 2017, you asked for $40,000 and you've already spent 64.
Well, and we need to know about programs too, does that need to be brought down? Because if you look at the total, 213 of last year, and the proposed for next year, I think it's about the same or even less. So, it just needs to be reallocated to where, where the numbers are, is what I would recommend. And yes, we should do that before we, if we know it, we should do it before we, um, adopt the budget.
As, as a recreation person, that scared me to death when I saw that $40,000 number. Not, I'm not picking on y'all, but unfortunately, unfortunately, you have the dubious distinction of being the department head in, in the, you know, where I worked for 36 years. So, uh, I'm, I'm not trying to pick on you, I'm just, I'm just asking questions. And on that same page, under food and gift shop, uh, this budget's a little bit different than the budget I'm used to working with, and that's not to say that the budget I worked with was better than the budget I'm looking at. But this one is not in near the detail in this sense. Uh, the Parks Recreation and Leisure Services budget includes recreation services, which is parks and sports and programs and all those things. It includes the senior division, it includes the High Mount Gold Museum, it includes the, the amphitheater, I'm assuming. So, if I were to look in this budget and ask you the question, how much was spent on senior mills last year? What is, what is your budget for senior mills in the senior division?
And while you're thinking about that, because that was my same problem. I mean, I haven't done these budgets for 20 years, I'm basing it on what I've done so far. And last year, looking at last year's budget, because I was having a real hard time with this, so I'm not blaming it all on y'all. But it was very, last year it was broken down, so when Parks Recreation Leisure Services, senior citizens, gold mu- they're all lumped together, it's really hard, at least for me. I don't know if I'm the only one. It was really hard for me to follow that and fi- and compare it to last year, because this isn't like last year's, and y'all did last year's too. Is there a reason we changed all that?
Well, there's been an organizational change to the chart. So, now, whereas before, all those individual managers had some spending authority and all that, that has all been consolidated, so we only have four department heads, now they're the only ones with spending authority. So, that's what we were trying to illustrate with this.
So, does that mean the budget has to be done that way and can't be broken down? Even though they are under one department head, do they still have to all be lumped together with the finances? I just find it hard to see how each one of those areas are operating.
I'll refer to the city manager on that question.
You can get as finite as you want, I mean, it, it's your budget. Go back and answer the first question, because, um, uh, which is, um, the grant monies, um, for the food services. So, so take them back to that page.
Okay, so, um...
That wasn't the question.
Uh, the, the first question was whether or not you could tell them what the food services costs.
How much the city's portion? I know what the grant portion comes from, you know, that, that's in there, I saw, I found that. But that does not fund, unless it changed, does that grant fund 100% of the mills that the, that the senior services provides?
Well, even last year, I, I don't, it's my opinion, we certainly could have been charging a little bit more. Where we've gone in this year, um, we certainly were approved for additional allocations. And I, I'll have to go and pull the exact dollar amount per meal that we get reimbursed. But the, just so that everyone understands, the food costs have gone up. Earlier part of the year, the state did, um, bid out a new food vendor. So, um, that part, we knew it was coming, but we didn't exactly know when the state, um, got the, when they finally approved the vendor, what those costs were going to be. What you will see this year, if you go under food, um... Which one?
The budget this year for the senior food is 70,500.
Where is that at?
I just have the details by account.
Where is it in here?
It's included in that food and gift, gift shop that you're asking about?
Which line are we?
I mean, I'm, so it's included in the 112,700, but you, you know that $70,000 of that is for the, is what the city actually pays for food services for the seniors, is what you're telling me. How difficult is it for the council that's about to approve this budget to, to have that information, Mr. City Manager?
It's not difficult at all. So that you understand, obviously, you know, last year to this year, um, we, we made a change in our finance director, so CFO. Um, we also made a change in the organizational chart so that we have the departments. And the goal is to migrate us and get us in full compliance with, with the generally accepted accounting principles and the, uh, uniform chart of account, so that historically, you know, over, and the goal is to, by the time you get to five years, actually be able to start doing some trend analysis. So, for instance, you all had mentioned, you know, earlier, you know, and rightfully so, we didn't have the date at the time. The CFO went in and, and she put some line items in here to account for the same amount of money, just trying to break it down. Um, at, at some point, you'll start to get enough history where you can almost go across and predict your, um, revenue chart. As far as, um, the finite, um, you know, that's just the CFO going and, and writing a bunch of reports and, and printing them out to you and getting them to you. There's nothing secretive, you know, about that. In fact, I think, I think, um, our finance staff has been more transparent. You know, even the check registries now, you can even see every single check that goes out of here, uh, on, on the internet now.
Yeah, and please understand that, that this is not a...
We don't take it as negative, it's your budget, you, you all have the fiduciary responsibility.
Exactly.
And that's on you.
I've heard you say that several times, and I agree with that 100%. You know, before, I would be comfortable passing a budget, I want to know these kind of things. Uh, and I want, you know, Chat Flynn plays, what is the part that, has that gone up or down? I know Chat Flynn, that varies every year based on the, the number of senior mills that are, that are provided. Is that number up, down?
The total, uh, number of mills that are being served?
Aggregate mills, yeah.
I will, I can come back to you, uh, we certainly report that information weekly, but I can come back next time with all of the meals to date.
And, and the only reason I even ask that, Vicky, and again, I'm not picking on you, I promise I'm not. The only reason I need to know that is because that helps me to understand, Sarah just answered the question, that the city's portion of, of the senior mills, uh, was $70,000. So, then that, you know, that would help me to answer that question. If, if, if the total cost, if, if, let's just say we received $100,000 from Chat Flynn, then the total cost for, for senior mills is $170,000. And let me, for the record, let me state that I am not in favor of going up on senior mills every day, at all. Some of those seniors can't afford that. But, uh, you know, that's my, my reason in asking, you know, there's a, there's a method behind that. And I like, I may maybe the only one up here that wants to know those kind of details, but I would love to, because I'm going to ask those questions.
Can I respond? That 70,000 is our expense. We don't, we wouldn't budget an additional expense for, that, that, I mean, that's the total senior meal expense. And then I budget a revenue that offsets it, so I can tell you right now on page...
That's the grant incoming.
Right, under, yeah. On page 32, you can see the amount that we get from the nutrition program. From the federal side, we get 75,000, and from the state side, we get 20,500.
I see that under intergovernmental revenues?
Yes.
So, if you just look at that, then we are receiving 95,000, and our cost so far has been 70,000, so... Unless I don't understand where something is posted. Obviously, we have the overhead, which hopefully the grant is trying to cover some of that as well.
Yeah, and that's, and maybe that part wasn't clear, where I said, we went back in, um, the early part of the year when we made our application to apply more of the overhead into the grant, because, you know, just going back in there, it wasn't truly accounted for in previous years in the application. So, in terms of our, uh, cost per meal reimbursement, that part hasn't increased compared to previous years, so.
Thank y'all.
All right, under, um, personnel, assistant library manager, the range is 35 to 54. Is that an existing person that's in, in, um, in the library now?
That is an existing person.
Okay, so she's making between 22 and 33 right now?
Well, she's currently at a lower range, that would be what she would be promoted to.
So, I'm saying she's making between 22 and 33 right now.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking thousands, yes.
About the, the current salary? And some of you are talking thousands, yes.
With that being said, is that the, one of the assistants, is that taking her place? Or is that, it says new, new and upgrade, is that an upgrade from full, from part-time to full because of her going up?
That one is the reclass, they're already full-time, so that would just be reclassing them and, uh, modifying the, uh, salary range from where they're currently at.
So, you're really only saying that you need two new people in library?
So, the, one upgrade, um, which is...
Existing.
Is existing. One change from a part-time to a full-time.
That's still there, you only need two, two library assistants, that's new at part-time. I'm on page 107. Nope, 107 in my book.
Right, so four of those positions are library, two are brand-new and two are upgrades. One is an upgrade from, from the pay grade going from an 11 to a 20, and the other is a upgrade from part-time to full-time.
Yeah, it's not clear there.
That's what I'm saying, you're only asking for two new people.
Correct.
The equivalent of two FTE. That's a, that's a very important distinction, and the equivalent of two FTE, FTE being full-time equivalent.
An equivalent of 1.5, because the two part-times make one, and then it's adding the other half, so...
And the two part-time don't benefit?
Library, museum, yes, program, that's correct.
They don't get benefits.
Which would make it different from if those two were a full-time person.
That's correct.
While we're on that page, why a new deputy court clerk?
Um, the deputy court clerk, all right, so, uh, currently, the court is 100% operated under the, um, uh, police department. So, all operations are through the police department. So, as a city manager, um, obviously trying to implement best practices, the goal is to get the court to operate as a court separate from the police department, so that it stands alone and, um, uh, in, in some of the conversations that I've had with our, uh, city attorney, you know, we're, we're at that point now that the city is large enough that the court could sustain its own operation. Quite frankly, um, uh, this is, this is no negative, the chief and I have talked about this. It's not a reflection on anything here. Right now, we have a great court that can be made a whole lot better, but perceptions also kill you in a lot of things, what looks like judge and jury, when everything is run under the guise of the police department. A city this size should be having, um, the judicial separate as its own entity from the law enforcement side of public safety. So, um, I've put in here a request to, um, uh, basically get, migrate the court out so that it runs as its own operation, as a judicial branch, and we budget it as a judicial branch separate from the police department.
So, right now, the police, sorry, who's the acting clerk? It's from our police department?
Correct, it's a police department employee that works for the court.
Okay, that has to be costing us something, right? I mean, we're, we're not going from no clerk to a clerk.
We have, we have currently one person, um, and so we will have a court administrator and then a court clerk. So, you'll have two folks running the court, if you will.
So, we're adding another paid position that right now we're doing with somebody from the police department? We'd be adding another person?
Um, the police department does, and, and will continue to do some resources preparation for the court, but the court itself will take over some additional responsibilities.
Okay, and what's the job of the clerk of the court?
Uh, the job of the clerk of the court is to keep up with all the tickets, uh, to send in all the paperwork to the Department of Motor Vehicle Safety and the Georgia Crime Lab. They are, I don't know how many cases we're processing, but I am sure it's in the tens of thousands, I would think, and just maintaining those records.
So...
Over what period of time?
Over a period of a year.
So, um, is their position... So, um, is their position, is it a type of position where, from the public standpoint, it could be abused on the citizenship, seen as not, where if they had bias, it could have an effect so that we can't have them doing that job because of the perception? Are we hiring somebody because of perception, or could they actually be in a position that could be abused because they're connected to our police and not separate? Is that clear?
Not really, but...
Sorry.
But the whole discussion of separating the courts from the police department, if you looked in your GMA newspaper that came out just this past week, that whole article is devoted to that particular issue.
Just got it.
And it all arises out of too many municipal courts in the country. Fortunately, not here, but too many of them are designed just to generate revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And it becomes, the appearance, if you don't run it correctly, is that the police department is just, you know, running people in and out to collect money. And so the trend is now to try and separate the police department from the judiciary so that it, the judicial system looks totally independent from the police, and it's not to be a fundraising mechanism. And because you have judges separated from the police department, you need to have the clerks separated also so that they answer to the court, to the judge, and to the city manager as opposed to answering to the police chief, which is the law enforcement mechanism that's out trying to make tickets.
Okay, well, I guess that was my question, if they were in the position where it really required their separation because they have some sort of power as the clerk?
No, I, I don't, I don't see it, it's, I don't see it as being that reason, that they have some sort of innate power that they can do something. It is more public perception of just not having the law enforcement people also being the ones who are serving as the, the judges and the judicial administration. You know, we, if you go to court, city court, and you've got a judge sitting there, and you've got the clerk of court sitting where you are, and he or she is in a police officer uniform to the people sitting out there in the audience, that clerk just looks like another police officer. And the, the perception to the public as a whole throughout every study we've ever seen is that, that doesn't, that doesn't show that you are promoting justice in your city. You're just trying to raise money.
Now, keep in mind, from, from a city management standpoint, administrator, we have no problem right now. I want to be ahead of the curve, get out there before anything might or could potentially happen. I want to be able to follow best practices, and so as the city continues to grow, you know, by the time we're, you know, 25, 30,000, it's like, well, why didn't you do this, you know, when you should have done this? The bulk of the discussion with a lot of the changes and a lot of the research coming out from the office of the courts at the state level is, all of the training is saying, folks, evaluate your courts, evaluate how they're operating, evaluate how you're working with, with your clientele that generally only have, you know, one instance with your city, which, which is a ticket. The public loves our police department. I'm the first to say we don't have a problem, but administratively, from perception, you know, we want to get out ahead of this. It'd be the same thing as, you know, we, we, we've worked with the, you know, police department where the goal is to have bailiffs that are true bailiffs as opposed to someone coming to court and saying, okay, you're the bailiff, da-da-da, come on in, do this. And he's like, well, hold it, you're the bailiff, but, but you're also the guy that's now prosecuting me and giving testimony against me. So again, you know, this is the downside of sending your city manager to training and coming back and saying that we need to implement, you know, best practices on the evaluation of our overall court. If I came back from training and put my head in the sand and said, let's keep it the way it is, and then a problem did arise, then the question is like, well, shouldn't you have known better? So again, it's just part of best practices to get ahead of it and do it now, uh, uh, ahead of the curve.
What's a court clerk make?
While we're on the court, I'm going to make a strong argument to recreate our community service department. We may not be able to do that this year in the budget, but I can tell you as a resident, and hearing from a lot of residents in the city, the streets are not being kept like they were. And I know, living on Harrell Road, we used to see community service workers at least once a month come down the road and pick up paper, and that's just not happening now. So I, you know, I could argue that there is a benefit in having community service workers out there. And it's different having probationers in a van walking down the street than it is folks with stripes on the side of their uniforms. So, you know, I, I think there's a benefit not only in, in that, keeping the streets clean and the parks clean and the city, you know, buildings clean, that, you know, we need to look at that again. But my question is, I'm assuming that folks that come to the court here in Villarica are still being sentenced to community service?
Since our city attorney is also a judge, and since there's been a lot of change over the last 12 months in, in, in the law of what they can and cannot do, do you want to address that, city attorney?
Yeah, I, I don't specifically know. I'm sure that the city court in Villarica is sentencing people to do community service work. Where they're doing that community service work, I don't know. Do you know, chief?
We, we have, uh, came up with a list of local charities and things like that, and once the judge sentences them to community service, the probation officers give them that list, and on that list, it has several different charities that they can do community service since they can't do it here anymore.
So you commit a crime in Villarica, and you don't necessarily do your service to the city?
Correct.
You, you could do that. I mean, we, we could reestablish a program, but you're going to have to hire one, two, however many people to actually supervise it, because you can't, you can't, and, and these are going to have to be fairly sophisticated employees to be doing that. You can't just send 10 people out under the charge of somebody who's untrained and doesn't know what they're doing because, you know, to have that person telling people, run over there, run across that highway and pick up that piece of trash over there, and the person gets hit with, by a car, then suddenly, that community service work is turned into a large liability for the city. So it is a good thing. And I, I, by saying that, I don't mean that we shouldn't consider it. Community service can be very valuable, but it's, it's not absolutely a free service to us either.
Nor is working inmates. It's the same...
Through our food bank at our church, I think Ms. Brooke does something through the chef department, and it'd be people up there sometimes helping, doing things through the week and on the weekend that is doing community service, and she has to keep up with the hours and whatever, whatever. I don't know all the logistics of it, but I know we do, do some of that at our church food bank program.
You know, and I guess, you know, having been around that for all these years, I can't, I can't remember a lawsuit ever involving a, a community service worker in 14 years of working here. But I know, I know the benefit of the community service workers, and I can tell you all, Jim Benedict, I'll call his name because he's still an employee here, but he would, in the morning, his, his drill consisted of standing each community service worker up, and chief, you know this to be the truth, and he would have them hold their hands out with their fingers like this and point to their belly button, and he said, that's where your pants stay. I don't want to see him below that. So I, I know it can be done with part-time employees. It's just, I, I guess I've got a, a little bit of angst about the fact that, that folks that commit crimes against the people here in Villarica aren't doing their, their time for the citizens of Villarica. I mean, that's just, that may be just me. Maybe I'm the only one that has that problem, but, and I certainly think they, you know, there's a need for them at, in churches and different civic organizations and community groups, but I know for a fact there's a need picking up paper on the side of the road. So I would just like us to, to at least look, look at that.
I know some, I've known some that if they, if they live in Villarica, they will not ask to do community service in Villarica. And a lot of them from other cities, they'll come to Villarica so that the people won't see them, that know them. And that's basically the reason they do it. They'll go to Douglasville or Carrollton or wherever to keep from being around their buddies.
That's not a very good deterrent to crime.
Well, let's, let's go back, and, and I can bring forth some, some data at a future meeting, but so, so in the 2015 budget, this was running us about $100,000. There was changes as to probation, as to time served, things of that nature, as to, I can sentence you, but as long as you stay out of trouble, you know, you do, you follow X, Y, Z, then, then everything is dismissed, and a lot of these weren't even doing work. As we were moving forward, um, we, with the changes that happened in the probation system, we then got to the point where we couldn't even maintain a full crew. And so you mentioned Jim Benedict, he was actually fulfilling and providing us reports that we actually used to, to evaluate whether or not it made sense. Now, since then, let's, let's say we fast forward. You know, we've made changes, we've got a new judge in the place, we've got a new, you know, Judge Protem, and we have a new solicitor. So again, I, I say, hmm, maybe, maybe we go back, look at those numbers, look at whether or not we can mandate through the court that, you know, probation is done here. Because what we were competing with was that you have all these other folks that if you say, I'm giving you Jeffries 10 hours, they go somewhere else where they were getting three to one, which means that, you know, in, in some cases, and I will tell, in order to physically get folks, Jim will tell you, he had to offer, I had authorized, say, okay, we absolutely have to have those bodies here, you know, I'll authorize you on case-by-case basis to, to increase. And it's like, you know, playing, you know, bidding wars where, you know, the, the sheer number of probationers through our court had reduced to the point that it just didn't sustain at the time $100,000. You know, I'll work with Mecklen, go back, look at those numbers again, look at what we can do through a court, look at what our current court's doing in probation, and as long as we're in line with, with the law and it justifies, I'll bring it back to you. But that's why, that's why we had looked at, at eliminating it, because it was cheaper to get two boot camp crews for the same money that we were running the probation. And so when we, when we lost the probation crew, we went to get a state crew and we got a Douglas County crew. You know, the state crew, they are having such a hard time now getting guards and keeping guards. So, you know, the wardens told me as of late, you know, I, I'm seven in the hole of guards that I have to fill before I can even get you your crew back. The Douglas County is, I'd love a second crew, but not on Douglas County. I need those crews. So, so, you know, the thought process was that, again, once the new sheriff was in, to go try to have some conversations, because if we can get a second crew, then we have two and two, and, and we're back to where we, you know, were. I'll tell you, on the Douglas County side, you know, those streets are looking very good.
I agree.
You know, but, but we're down that extra crew that we had, and of course, we, we, we're, we're still, will always be down, so it's either a crew or it's probation, but the probation comes with other caveats, if you will. Everything comes with extra caveat. So it's, you know, I'll, I'll go back and dust off those numbers that I'd run in order to put this budget together as to why, why we didn't go that route.
And I don't have an opinion on if we do it that way, but I will say this, I have also noticed that it's been a challenge apparently all year with having the trash picked up. And I got to be honest, it was probably just the other diaspora. It's, it's, I think it's a little embarrassing for the city, so that's probably something that we do need, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to find something because we are having a more difficult time, it seems like, keeping the trash picked up. So whatever works.
Part of that is, is if you look at the, you know, right now, our streets crew, everybody runs chasing their tail. There's no follow-up. So every time we pull staff, you know, it's like, you know, I will be the first to say. We use the inmate crew on the whole, the whole water plant, you know, on, on, you know, helping us get the water plant online. That, that takes you away. You know, they're, they're out there, you know, picking up trash, they're out there mowing, you know. I use the inmate crew in, in order to get the, the beautification project, you know, to the point that, you know, we're going to lose this. So, you know, we use them, you know, to, to do different repairs. So every time you tap for them, I mean, you know, we're using them in the cemetery. So every time you tap those, you know, i- it's a resource. So, you know, we, we do, you know, publish a list of where we go, get the trans, you know, trash, but if it's not trash, it's obviously weeds, mowing, et cetera. So the solution, again, I'll come back, I'll look at the numbers of the probationers, I'll look at, you know, continue to try to get the conversation. The, the additional bodies in streets is so that, you know, we're not, you know, having to, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul every time we try to do something in the city. The second thing is, is that as we look at, um, physical resources, we also look at during the summer months, the budget proposes bringing on some seasonal help so that when we are actually in high season, we're hitting the grass as aggressively. You know, if we stay in drought, you're not going to have as much grass growing, you're just, of course, gonna lose more money on enterprise.
Let's see the paper.
It's, it's just, it's just horrible, just horrible.
And I have one more question, and I'm going to let everybody else speak. $25,000 for an arborist, since there's no justification.
Yes. Let me tell you the justification of that. Go to Cedar Town is a perfect example. So our Germa...
Page number, please. Give the page number, so we have...
Yeah. Germa obviously comes to the city. Germa is our insurance company. They come to us, just like they do other cities, they do spot inspections. They have given guidance to every city that they visited that you shall have an arborist to go out and evaluate all trees that are in your right-of-way. The reason is, is of course, if you look at Cedar Town, you know, 25,000 is a small price to pay versus what they had where a limb falls off, where, you know, someone gets impaled. They had an arborist on staff, they had the arborist study, Germa didn't pay. So they've given guidance and direction, and, and, and the city said, we would put it in our 2017 budget, we will go ahead and get the trees that are in our right-of-way inspected, and if there's issues, we're going to address those issues. And the reason that we're doing that plan is so that if we do have a tree topple over or impale someone or whatever, we're covered.
That is a perfect explanation, and I appreciate that. I would love to see that in the budget.
No, just not on railroad property.
Thank you for that. So that was a great answer. So basically, what's an insurance policy?
It's, it's, it's CYA, and, and trying to reduce the liability on the city side. It's like, you know, the, the city had a arborist plan. Pete, I gave it to you, it was dated when? It's been, it's years old, but, but there was an arborist inspector. The city hasn't done anything since, and since he follows, he'll tell you he's had trees in right-of-way that we've had issues. Vicki's had them in the parks. So they're telling us, get this done before, and if you don't, we're not going to cover your claim. How do I get that in three words?
All right.
Were any of the advisory boards that we appoint involved at all with the departments on, or give input as to the budget?
Not to my knowledge.
Recreation, library, anything like that? Any input at all? Were they involved at all?
The departments all come up through that, so you, you can speak for, Clint, you know, did, did you guys work with Kelly or anything on the library budget? Okay.
I think the trouble we're going to this...
Is that, is that something that should hap, I mean, should that happen?
Should it?
Yeah, since we...
Should it, what it could have? It's not required.
No.
I mean...
Yeah, but that's not my question, if it's required. Do you think that's a good idea? Those people that we appoint, that they have some input, maybe when they're developing the budget?
Well, I mean, from an administrative standpoint, the department heads know what is necessary. You know, our, our charge from the charter is that we present a budget that meets the obligations for the city. So, you know, on things like, you know, once you approve the budget, you know, their plan, you know, their, their input into, you know, design of a park, for instance, is, is very critical. But again, you know, those committees are your committees, not, not our committees, if you will. We, we implement policy, they're not our committees.
That's true, but the budget comes to us and we have to approve it. So I was just wondering if that might be a useful thing or not? Just a question.
Page 72, under professional services, 57,076. You say 40 is for the Parks Trail Master Plan, and 1,500 for meal restoration, but there's a little left over there.
Okay, you're at professional services?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Top page, okay, I see.
Right in the middle of page 72.
Mm-hmm.
We went from 12 and a half thousand to 57, 776.
Sure. That is, um, the request is regarding a, really a comprehensive parks and trail plan for the city. Uh, part of that is really how we're going about planning for parks, and, um, I think it is one of those things that, you know, as we've been finding, uh, uh, it would, it could help us better strategize in terms of what we're gonna program into our parks. I think a lot of times, uh, what we've been finding over the years, a lot of things, the request is just simply, hey, we'll randomly turn something into a park, and the goal is to really be a little bit more strategic in terms of how we're planning for the growth of the park system, as well as, uh, the, a trail system that is potentially, uh, has potential to come and be implemented across the entire city. So that's part of what you see in terms of that $40,000, the $1,500 is the mural restoration at the mill. That was, um, part of that discussion.
What's the other 16,000 for, 'cause it's not showing?
I don't have a note here, but as you can see, in 2016, we have a little bit over 12,000 in there, and I think we just wanted to leave some in there as kind of contingency for other things that may come up.
So that 40K, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We arbitrarily left 16, over 16,000 extra in that.
I'm sorry?
We arbitrarily left $16,000 plus some.
Well, you can see that there's 12,500 in this 2016, so, um, I think that, I don't know, I mean, we just identified out the, the specific projects that were listed to us, so, um-
How many parks we have?
We're... Let me see, it's, it's twofold in a sense, um, we're at the discussion of whether we're gonna even add another park, but we're still at just over, I have to go back and double check right off the top, but nine with some of the other, um, smaller parks. This is?
That's right.
This from-
Do we have any next one, or do we have any left that are all the professional services?
That professional services, who will we hire in this year for 12, 22,000?
22,000?
No, it says 16, it's 12 and a half right now. Why do we spend that money?
Um, uh, parks, recreation, leisure services, professional services, could be anything, for instance, like, you know, when we hire Tommy McCloud, for instance, to go out and help with a drainage issue, um, that comes out of professional services. If you hire someone to go out and do a repair on the, um, uh, train tracks, or you need an engineer, or, or things of that nature, you, you, you basically have to have money to be able to, um, to pay them, so, um, and, um, and the CFO can tell you, you know, for instance, how much, um, has, uh, been, um, spent this year, for instance, in professional services in that line item.
It says 12 and a half, well, this was printed a while back, but-
That's the, uh, 12 and a half is the 2016, uh, budget.
Okay, and we, how much did that-
So I'm asking her to tell us how much, uh, has been spent.
We had 6,600 so far in the library. 2,000 at the mill. And 6,800 so far at the, just under parks and recreation, so-
Total, uh-
So that's about 14,000, um, which is higher than what we have budgeted this year so far. So again, that makes up for the difference from the 40,000 and the 1,500 to the 57,000. So we're looking at current year, um, trying to leave some room for other unexpected projects.
So the 40,000 for the parks, trails, master plan, did I, were you finished with the other thing? I'm sorry. Um, that's for an overall city plan, is that what we're talking about? Okay, so this would be my question, I guess, I, the mural restoration is very self-explanatory, so my only two questions would be this. Um, I know you don't have to bid out professional services, but how do we make sure that, you know, whoever we're giving it to, if we're not bidding it out, is competitive? And number two, do we have anybody on staff that has any of these skills so that we don't always have to pay somebody else to do it?
Right. In terms of doing a park master plan, I really think that's something, um, that should require some professional services, where you have, um, you get assistance from a planning firm. Uh, I don't have the staff, um, other than, you know, just myself, um, and I've not planned, done a plan like that by myself before, so I'll-
Okay, I wasn't sure, 'cause I knew you had background in economic development and parks, and so I wouldn't-
Yeah, I have, I have a background in, in planning, and I've certainly done some parks planning, but I've always been a part of a team whenever I've come in, um, and done things like that, so it's not something that I would ever put on one person to necessarily do by themselves, do up, to prepare all of the analysis.
So is that 40,000 just for that plant, is that 40,000 just for that one professional item?
Correct.
They're gonna go out and-
Correct.
Really- Tell us how we should plan our parks, I don't know, somebody's gonna have to sell me better on this.
Sure.
Yeah, well, equivalent, equivalent price, so that you know, so, you had what, 41, 42,000 just for your downtown master plan? Um, but that wasn't all the full cost, you actually had costs for, you know, staff, charrettes, all of these other things that were involved in that. Um, that was just the city's portion, but then you had a grant attached to that, so same thing, you know, if, if there's grants available or anything like that, she certainly ought to go aggressive, uh, against it.
Right. I would always explore, um, obtaining grants to assist with any, uh, planning projects or even implementation of projects, so let me first say that. I think, again, part of this is about being more strategic in terms of planning for what will be new parks. Um, it seems like every time I go to a meeting, there's a conversation that something needs to be turned into a park, and really what I'm saying is, we need to take a step back to begin to be more forward-thinking about, um, what new parks could come online, how much, uh, from a staff perspective, uh, I tell people all the time, we're actually really strapped with all of the parks that we do have and the maintenance that occurs. So every time you talk about adding a new park, there are additional resources that come with that, and I just don't think that the city's being very strategic about it.
Yes, and please make sure they understand that, 'cause that's true, it's like our own life, the more you own, the more you have to maintain, so-
Correct.
It's not just, oh, it'd be nice to have a park over there, well, we have to pay and take care of that afterwards, what are those associated costs as far as staff, mowing or whatever? Okay.
So your current downtown master plan, and then if you approve it, your parks master plan will then funnel up into your process of your comprehensive master plan, which is due, uh, in 2018.
What's the difference in operating supplies and supplies on the bottom of 73?
So, um, that was part of our, uh, the way we wanted to change some things, whenever we have events, uh, the supplies that we need for events, uh, those are the things that are certainly different than the supplies that, when we just need paper, or we have pens or folders. So we really tried to make the distinction on the supplies that we need for different events that we do, um, and some of the programs we put on related, uh, to those type of supplies, as opposed to, again, regular office supplies.
All right, operating supplies, how much is in the parks and recreation, how much is in the library, of the 155,000?
This is a new category, um, if you combine it with the last one. Pages are some, too.
This is not them.
Oh, okay. So for the library, it's $13,000.
For gold museum, it's 30,000.
Gold museum, it's 30,000.
And operating.
And operating.
Recreation. Recreation, that's operating.
Um, the operating supplies is 125,000, and-
And what?
The office supplies is just 5,250.
That's in parks and right.
Why did it go up for $30,000?
Which one?
Same page?
Where at?
Bottom line, operating supplies this year was 125, next year is 155, I think.
You can see that the, if you look at the top line, the supplies, that's also decreased, we're trying to get that more in line. Um, last, 2016 was the first time we'd split out supplies to operating supplies, so going in at 2017, we have, we do have a year's worth of actual activities, so trying to get that better, uh, fine-tuned, where supplies and operating supplies are split up appropriately.
Is there a volunteer banquet involved with this?
Yes, there is, um, similar to that, when we have the volunteer appreciation, we look, uh, to certain things, like operating supplies, it comes out of contractor, um, contract labor, so, depending on what is actually being purchased, if you will, that makes a determination of where we pull the funds from.
On page 72, M and R buildings jumped $80,000 from last year, from this year to next year, for other repairs, what is that?
M and R building, yeah, you can see in the description, um, I think David mentioned this earlier, maybe not, um, we talked about it in our finance committee meetings, we were hoping to include money to improve all of the city buildings, um, so for city hall, police department, gold dust, V Plex, and gold museum, we've allowed 25,000 at each place for, um, general maintenance and repairs, 'cause each, each site is in dire need of some, just basic repairs. So in, in recreation, you have three of those main buildings, gold dust, uh, V Plex, and gold museum, so that's 75,000 of it.
You said you're gonna have to cut 1.3 million dollars out of the budget? I think. And yet, we're-
We're still to something over this year.
Overall, we kept 2.2, almost 2.3 million out, from what was originally requested.
And yet, we're going up from this year to next year, 2.3 million, 10%.
Do you wanna explain why, why that is on the intake intake? 'Cause I don't think that's very clear. And actually, what the true overall budget increase is?
Sure. If you look at page 26 and 27. Page- Page 26 here shows the citywide revenues, so you can see all the funds combined, this does include your general fund and your enterprise funds, all lumped in together, including SPOSS and any of the special revenue funds, which is our debt service, um, police, seizure, et cetera. And you can see, on the revenue side, we have a 12% increase from the prior year, uh, the 2016 budget, in that column, you can see we had a total, uh, revenue for the whole city of 23,227,000, and in 2017, we're proposing 25,957,000. Um, but if you look at that note there on the bottom, um, this year, we are, what we have proposed is a significant amount of SPOSS projects, and, uh, we do know the projected amount of SPOSS that we will receive over a certain period of time, even though we don't necessarily have all those funds up front. Um, so included in this is more SPOSS projects than we ha, than we will be getting in, in just next year, but knowing we have so much, um, coming for the next five years, for both Carroll County and now the Douglas County SPOSS. So in order to present you a balanced budget, I have to account for that, um, deficit, if you will, because, um, again, we're gonna be using more SPOSS money than we're taking in for next year, so we call that a use of fund balance, so basically, you're using up some of your reserve in the year, knowing that you're gonna pay it back. So, um, it's included as part of the miscellaneous, I believe? Yes. You see an increase, a percentage increase of 1,255%, that is due to the use of fund balance, and I can tell you-
So we're gonna do some of those projects, we're gonna do some of those projects ahead of time in front the SPOSS money, as we said in the me, in our financial meetings, only for one year, so that we can't overspend the SPOSS, except for that year, and then replenish the fund balance when the money comes in the second year or third year?
That is correct.
We're gonna put the two and a half million back.
That is correct, so 1.6 would be overspending of the Carroll County with anticipation, we know we still have five more years to collect that, and 726,000, dollars use of Douglas County SPOSS that we will not have received next year, but we know is coming, um, that we will pay back over those next few years. So when you remove that total of 2.3 million out of that, um, out of these totals up here, then the net increase of revenue is only 2%. And likewise, if you look down on the citywide expenditures on the next page, you can see from 2016, in the dark blue box, our total budget of expenditures was 2.3, or, sorry, 23.6, almost 23.7 million, and in 2017, we have 25,948,000, 25 million, excuse me, 948,000, with a total increase of 10%. But, again, it's a balanced budget, so what you're, um, included on that side is also the 2.4 million dollars of SPOSS projects that we, that are above and beyond what we will have received next year, knowing that we will get more in. So when you take those out and you don't consider that portion, because it's not truly a one, it's not, um, part of the, um, this year's budget, it's part of what it's gonna take from reserve, then the de, we actually have a decrease in our total expenditures of .2%.
I, I sometimes get very bothered when we start taking things from reserve and think downstream, we're gonna put it back, 'cause that sounds more like the federal government, and they never put it back.
Well, here's the critical thing, and, and I've mentioned this, um, a couple times, and, and you're absolutely right. So I'll be coming in the December cycle, um, starting with December 1st, now that the Doug, Douglas SPOSS has passed, um, uh, I'm going to come with that resolution that, um, I have talked about in previous meetings, and that is that you're going to, as a council, be given the opportunity to agree to a, a resolution that says, we as a council, agree to utilize, uh, fund balance for the approved projects, and it states, so that you can repay yourself back. As that SPOSS money comes in, it is allocated money, it's, it's, it can't go anywhere else. You have a SPOSS intergovernmental agreement that this council's entered, and you've gone to the voters and said, these are the projects we're going. So if you look at the money that you're going to loan yourself, and you go back to the capital projects under Douglas County, you see that it is all of the projects, um, listed there with the five-year, um, uh, program as to, um, what was approved. So you can't reallocate that money, if you will, all you're doing is you're loaning yourself money, because, uh, SPOSS passed, so- I'm going to come with that resolution that I have talked about in previous meetings. And that is that you're going to, as a council, be given the opportunity to agree to a resolution that says, "We, as a council, agree to utilize fund balance for the approved projects," and it states so that you can repay yourself back. As that SPOLOST money comes in, it is allocated money. It's, it's, it can't go anywhere else. You have a SPOLOST intergovernmental agreement that this council's entered, and you've gone to the voters and said, "These are the projects we're going." So, if you look at the money that you're going to loan yourself, and you go back to the capital projects under Douglas County, you see that it is all of the projects listed there with the five-year program as to what was approved. So, you can't reallocate that money, if you will. All you're doing is you're loaning yourself money, because SPOLOST passed. So, by, by April first, the Department of Revenue has to do all of its work to get the SPOLOST penny sales tax back in play, so that start in April first, I love that, April Fool's Day, that penny is at the sales, point of sale. Then, later in the year, after they've collected the money and dispersed it, you'll start getting money trickling in, probably about September, October next year. So, from a perspective of the voters on the Douglas County side, they say, "Hey, you know, we pushed for SPOLOST. We voted for SPOLOST, we got it passed. When the heck are you gonna do some projects?" So, what this does is it gives you an opportunity to go out and get some projects done, so that they can say, "You put your money where your mouth is," or word is, or whatever that phrase is, "And, and we're gonna get some of these key things done now." And that as that money's coming in, dollar for dollar, you have to pay back, because that's what the resolution says, and those are restricted funds, back into your fund balance. So, again, it's gonna be up to the council to decide, does it want to wait till twenty eighteen to start on those projects, once money comes in? Or does it want to go ahead and utilize some of its fund balance to get some of those initiatives started in twenty seventeen? That'll be up to you all.
So, it's a crap shoot whether or not you could use the money for some emergency soon, or you have to wait until you get the money back in from SPOLOST?
No, well, you, you have sufficient reserves. Again, because we always have to have a high balance, low balance. So, so we've calculated all that. You have still emergency funds available to you. Do you have an unlimited amount? No. But under SPOLOST, no matter what, you can't use that money, and you're not supposed to use that money for anything other than what was approved for.
So, I'm saying that, I'm saying that if we say yes to that and then spend the money out of reserves, and if a problem, some kind of break comes out that we need to spend money for to fix it, we don't have the money, because we've already spent it for SPOLOST. But SPOLOST is gonna send it back to us after September, October, November.
You're, you're not utilizing all of your, what's the current fund balance reserve?
Left.
It's what, about seven?
At your last, yeah, at the last financial update, it was six point three million of unassigned fund balance in the general fund, and we're asking to use two point three million.
Yeah, so you're asking to use a third, I'm, I'm getting tired, so about a third of your fund balance on money that you'll be getting back, yes?
And it's, in a sense, naturally mandated that it has to go back there, because the SPOLOST dollars have to be used for those projects, so if you loan yourself...
I don't wanna go to jail, and I don't want you to go to jail.
It has to go back to fund balance.
Yeah, but you have a city attorney there. That SPOLOST...
We gonna blame it on him?
No, 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 he, he's gonna tell ya. The SPOLOST, you can't use that for anything other than what you've approved without an act different from this council. You can't. So, that money coming back, so that's that resolution of you're agreeing to basically loan yourself money in anticipation of that coming in. That's up to you all. That, that is management saying, "You probably want to reward the voters for getting you six point three million of free money." That's up to you.
A good example of what we did that on was the Avanti building. We paid a million, a million dollars on the Avanti building, and then ended up paying ourselves back for the use of that money over a period of four or five years.
I don't think I have a problem with it, the, the year, for one year, so that we don't get into that kind of thing, that some government bodies have, where they've overspent their entire SPOLOST, and they have to pass another SPOLOST to pay off the previous SPOLOST. I don't want to get into that kind of...
How much total fund balance are we gonna use in this budget?
It's the two point three for the SPOLOST projects, and then the only other thing we've asked for is one hundred thousand dollars for the comprehensive master plan.
Two point four, then.
I'm sorry?
Two point four, then.
And the master plan?
Comprehensive, your comp plan, that's due in twenty eighteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, all of it, with the exception of a hundred thousand, gets repaid.
Okay.
All right, on page eighty-nine, Carroll County SPOLOST, how about that? Under capital, third entry down is Mirror Lake Connector.
Mirror Lake Connector, out of your downtown master plan that the council adopted, one of the priority projects in that is a, is the extension of Shoreline to downtown. So, I'm, I'm, from a staff perspective, is trying to figure out how you all gonna pay for this. Part of it is you start putting money towards it, while at the same time, we're having discussions with active developers, and also potentially tapping the Georgia Tollway Authority either for grants and/or loans. So, ultimately, the goal is to get that road built as a local project and in place within three years.
What is the five hundred thousand for, for this year, for next?
You...
Three hundred thousand?
I gotta, I gotta, okay, all right, I, I'm gonna ask you to jog your memory and just go back to some conversation that we had in executive session, and I think you may answer that question. So, engineering's part of it, and the rest is what we talked about in executive session. If you want to remember what that was, ask your city attorney.
I guess my, my concern would be the naming of Mirror Lake Connector.
Oh.
Implies that it's in Mirror Lake.
Well, it connects you to Mirror Lake.
How about the downtown?
What would you like it to be named, sir?
Downtown Connector.
I'll call it anything.
Yeah, let's change it to downtown.
Yeah, because there's a whole lot of people that live over there that aren't in Mirror Lake, too, and it'll connect us as well.
It's on this side of Mirror Lake.
It's all in Carroll County, I mean...
Let's make it the downtown connector.
Which comes out of, or the shoreline extension, because that's where it would come off of.
Let's rename it to the downtown connector.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it, it connects you, folks, it connects you to Mirror Lake Boulevard. So, so whatever you want, it's going to get you connected to Mirror Lake Boulevard. So, it's the Mirror Lake Connector. If you want to call it something else, by all means. We only picked that up, because that's what's been on the books and talked about well before I got here. You can call it howdy doody, all they care about is get that road done. So, I'm just trying to get it on the radar to get the road done.
Yeah? Who's next? You've been off for quite a long time. You did your part, huh?
I even turned my microphone off. I thought I was hogging the meeting.
You got it, what, at six-thirty or seven o'clock?
Six-thirty, I've gotta be at...
Lions Club?
Presentation at the Lions Club, so, a couple of Lions Club members in here, too, as a matter of fact.
They ain't going anywhere. Tell them to come, like, bring dinner here.
Just, you know, just, you know, the, I'm sure the, we probably had hundreds of people download the budget and, and look at it. And then, there is a question I have on page eighty-nine, since we're on page eighty-nine, that says Connor's Road Passive Park slash firing range. Having been in one of the planning meetings, I think that has now been scrapped. Is that correct?
Nothing is ever scratched. So, so, we've had multiple planning. What I've been hearing from the public input is they don't really want a firing range. Believe it or not, when, when, when that land was being talked about, being given to the public, the firing range was actually talked about from day one. And, so I know in our, our first charrette, they, they gave us examples of like the Douglas County range, and, you know, how it's blah, 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 you know, in a bowl or whatever, and nobody, none of the residents hears it and all that stuff. So, out of the charrettes, you know, again, the folks, if you want to call it representative of the public, have said, "Yeah, we don't want to have a firing range down there, because it's, you know, too close to the houses, et cetera." So, so what I have suggested is, well, you know, Spring Lake was talked about, but then if you take it to Spring Lake, oh, well, you know, what's gonna happen if we develop Spring Lake? The Police Department has asked for multiple years of finding some place that they can get their own training range somewhere in the city. So, every location that we've looked at so far hasn't come up. So, if, if the council is okay with saying, "Put it out at Spring Lake, you know, where the old waterworks were, we'll, we'll get that done." Doesn't matter to me, as long as we don't lose sight that the Police Department needs a firing range. Now, the downside is, is when we talked about all the SPOLOST and SPOLOST activities, you know, all of that was talked in, in that group, in fact, there was money put in there, allocated towards that park that also was earmarked. So, you know, that, that, it's either gotta be in that park, or they're not gonna be able to use that money towards that firing range.
At one time, we talked about putting it in the old west wastewater treatment plant area. Whatever happened to that?
Some, there was a problem.
EPD came knocking on our door, said, "You, you know, you're too close to the waterways and other things." And then we had to do a bunch of cleanup out there. That was one of the first things I had to address when I got here.
I, I'm one hundred percent behind the firing range, and I hope Chief will say that. I helped. I worked with him on two locations before I left. I did. There was a park involved, though, so it's kind of, that's not fair. But I just, you know, I, I fear that, I don't, I don't know that the residents in Mirror Lake or the people that have been attending these passive park meetings think that there's still gonna be a firing range at the passive park. If that's the case, then that's fine. If that's the will of the people, then certainly that's what we all want to do. But that just, you know, I looked at it and thought, well, we just, we just said that it wasn't gonna be the case at the last meeting last Saturday, and it's in the budget, so...
Yeah, this has been here, obviously, for a while, because if you go back to the, the, the whole SPOLOST discussion and the buckets and everything, part of the money that was allocated Connor's Lake also has a subgroup that was assigned to the Police Department and getting them. In fact, almost everybody at that table was Mirror Lake representative. I mean, Mike Williamson had identified all those folks. So, so again, you know, once you get through the whole process, at the end of the day, the council dictates what the master plan is, not the public. But they do it through a process of receiving input. So, if the council doesn't want a, a firing range out at that park, then, then, then we move on and we look at Spring Lake.
Bottom line facts on it, because if you get, you can make a decision on faulty information. I don't want faulty information, because it has been talked about out there for almost before, even before the donation. And I know the Police Department's been working on this for years, trying to get a place that even you could bring other people in to train. And we were told, some of the information that was said to myself was that, because we're like passive park, and most people aren't gonna think passive park, shooting range, but something about the depth and the burn, and you wouldn't even hear it. Well, I don't know. Will you or will you not? Because that's, that makes a big difference.
And that was the challenge to the engineers.
I want good facts, so that we can make a decision based on that.
Keep in mind, it's almost like this sewer thing, okay? You get a hundred and fifty-nine acre park, and it's like, hey, you know, and you look at it, it's like, well, maybe we could put, you know, the firing range down this thing, okay? And, 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 and we drew, we drew, we drew this whole line, and we met with the folks on the trust and said, "Oh, yeah, 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 okay, that's pie in the sky of, that was an idea." And it may not pan out, because they've now gotten the, the, the topography and the topo, and, and so, so that's what engineers are looking at, they're, they're going over, they're looking at the Douglas County firing range, because, again, at the end of the day, I wouldn't want to be living near somewhere where I hear pop, 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 pop.
No, no.
Okay? But, we were over, Pete and I were over at Spring Lake last week, and what did we hear? Pop, 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 and we're like, well, who's discharging in the city here? And, and then I realized it was just Danny. It's squirrels.
Armadillos.
Armadillos. But, but, but we don't know who it was. But, but at the end of the day, you know, this proposal right now, you know, on Spring Lake, because of the cost impact, we've got it going out ten years. So, the question is, does it not make sense to go ahead and have the Police Department develop the shooting range over at Spring Lake? That's gonna have to be a long-term decision for you as the council.
I thought that location got nixed a long time ago for some other reason.
Well, that's because you all came up with a master plan for a beautiful park. But then, but then that plan got changed, because they found out that they burned the old water plant and a bunch of other things.
Our first plan is we have to clean it up.
I was gonna say, we got money in here.
The Police Department are, are able to use the backside as a, 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 a range and develop as a range. But they'd only get about ten years out of it if you decide that it gets cleaned up, and then you want to make it a beautiful park. Again, that's also part of why Vicki's like, "We need a master plan," because we can't willy-nilly just say, "Well, we went here and went there, went there, okay." That's all part of the conversation, you know? I love throwing spaghetti at the wall and seeing what sticks, but whatever you decide has to stick, you know, because if you make a change, you know, that, that, that's just costly taxpayer stuff. And the chief, the chief has just like been chomping at the bit to get on that microphone.
I just took his own hip and rose.
So, he's up there, what, what, you keep approaching. You're approaching the bench.
That's in case we ask him, and we're kind of looking, bounce this off, Spring Lake is a possibility.
I was wondering if you wanted pepperoni or cheese pizza?
Cheese.
That's where I was at.
Cheese.
I'm, I'm moving towards more important things.
Amen to that. I'm on vacation as soon as I can get out of this meeting.
What's a half million dollars for?
Which line item?
For that item?
Which one?
That same item, that firing range?
We should ask you something.
Um, Connor's Park Passive Park, five hundred thousand?
A million?
Huh?
What we gonna do with that half a million?
That actually goes back to SPOLOST. You all are gonna decide ultimately what you're gonna do with it. There is a total amount that, if you go back to the Douglas County SPOLOST of the capital, that lays out that amount. And that page is... Oh, that's, oh, I am on Douglas County SPOLOST. Twenty seventeen. Sharon, did we do the whole five-year out on, in the budget?
Yes, it's on page eighty-two.
I know it's in here.
Fifty-two.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I knew we, I don't know. All right, fifty-two, fifty-two.
We showed two hundred and fifty thousand for twenty eighteen.
All right, so you see the D SPOLOST, Connor Park Passive, five hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand. So, they've allocated the committee, and then in your MOU, intergovernmental agreement, you have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated for that developmental park. Part of that money, and I'd have to go back to, to find notes, I, I think it's on the web, unless you remember exactly, was a subgroup that you would, you know, have the Police Department build a firing range out there. So, everything from, you know, whatever the public comes up with, parking, the bathrooms, the trails, the, you know, frisbee golf, a dog park, you know, whatever ultimately comes up in the master plan is what you all... So, right now, we're going through the charrettes and everything for developing the plan. So, then, once the plans, you know, finalized and all the input's done, it comes to you all, and you all have to then adopt the plan for the park. Once you adopt the plan, then we have to put it out and put the bid documents together and put it out for bid, and then get the, the park built. So, that half million does, I can't say to you right now if it's pretzels, or if it's, you know, I can't, sir. I don't know yet, because you all have to say what it's gonna be. Does that make sense?
Yep. Come back down a little bit, if you will, Ms. Clerk. Madam Clerk, come back down a little bit. Other way.
Other down.
Other down. There you go. Douglas County SPOLOST, three vehicles, that's Police Department vehicles, I assume. Does that mean they can only be used in Douglas County?
No. No. No, this, this was actually researched in advance, but good try. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna put Mirror Lake Precinct on all the side of the cars.
We're not gonna have Mirror Lake Precinct.
I guess my question, if that's the case, then we use all of the Douglas County inmates over here.
They can ride in those cars, too.
Yeah, yeah, see?
Yeah. The bottom line is, yes, those cars, but, but at any given time, you know, again, it's the allocation of the resources and being able to use the police cars over there. They also approved money for a, a, a substation and training facility over there on the Douglas County side.
So, Chief, why do we need an administrative captain?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that question, man.
I am, too.
We discussed this earlier.
You were gonna be ass, not tonight, but you were gonna be ass.
Oh, I knew I was. I knew I was. We have two captains.
Seventy-five thousand dollars, right?
We have two captains' positions.
Okay.
When I first came here in two thousand and five, by the way, this is my eleven-year anniversary this last month, by the way. Anyway, anyway, when I came here, we had a major and two captains. Correct? The major left, left us with just two captains. Instead of hiring a major, I created another captain's position to save money for the city. There was a third captain's position, instead of the major's position, which would have made more money. And that made us, even across the board, three captains. made more money. The, and that made us, even across the board, three captains. One was over patrol, one was over criminal investigations, one was over administration. Administration included courts, uh, included the receptionist, included the, uh, tack person, uh, the, uh, GCIC person. So that person was all over those people. Uh, that position was eliminated, uh, a couple of years later in the budget cuts. I was asking for that position back, because those people that were under that captain now report directly to me. And this makes it even across the board, where we have a go-between between me and those positions, just like every other position in the department.
How many people is it gonna be total?
How many people?
How many people would he supervise?
Oh.
Or she.
Do what?
Uh, he went gender-specific. I was just bailing him out.
I didn't hear what you said.
Or she.
I said, or she.
Or she.
He or she.
It's just generic.
Uh, it would be the receptionist, which is four, plus a couple part-times. It would be the court clerk, uh, until we do divide that, if we do. Uh, it would be the tack person, and it would be the training people. Because the training currently falls under the captain over investigations, but it, they would go back under the, uh, the, uh, captain over administration and, uh, the, uh, certification manager, which is also part of the training.
So if I'm doing my math correct, somewhere between nine and eleven?
But if we get a clerk, they won't have the clerk.
Right, so seven.
So it depend, that one depends.
But if they, if they didn't remove that court, then if there was an assistant clerk, that would be there, too. But that's, yeah. Correct.
Is it because these people all reporting to you bogs you down?
He's too operational.
I'm just trying to understand.
No, but that's a valid question. Yeah, look at his hair.
It doesn't bog me down. I mean, I, I, I have, I do my job, and I, I don't have a problem doing that part of the job. It just, it is even across the board where everybody has and in-between, instead of coming directly to me. Uh, I'm the one that makes the final decisions on discipline. I have the people that, you know, comes to me and, and makes the, the recommendations. This situation is, I'm the one that has to handle those, I'm the one that has to work all that, and, and it shouldn't be in that, you know, that way.
Or it's gonna free him up.
And they stole your position from you a while back. It was a co, would you say what position was it instead, that actually cost more than a captain?
Major.
Major.
Major. But you're saying, but you're actually saving us money, right?
I made the determination, we didn't need another major. I decided to go and have just three captains.
And you're saving us money. It's like when I go shopping, I spend all that money at the mall, but that tells me how much I saved. I give that part to my husband.
That's correct.
See how much I saved you.
It works, too.
How much do we save between a major and a captain?
Probably between eight to fifteen thousand, depending on experience.
What service were you associated with? Major, captain? Just, just asking, I mean, uh?
Police is based on terror military, sir.
Police.
A popo. Wah, 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 wah.
Ms. Leslie, did I answer those questions for you?
You did, yeah. I just, I knew we needed to hear your sales pitch on anytime we're gonna add something. Obviously, it makes a difference sometime when we realize that people got shorted some years back, when things happened, the recession, and people got cut because of the conditions of the, the finances. And sometime they need those people, but they've had to do without them, and I'm just trying to.
Have we, um, yeah, have we got all the questions answered? Anybody, anybody else got a question about the budget?
Not tonight.
Darn, and the piece is gonna be here shortly.
Almo.
Councilman Carter, before you adjourn, uh, Mr. McBrayer has been sitting here throughout all this, because he has one more thing he wanted to say about the Harthouse, so if you could.
Oh, my goodness.
If you could give him an opportunity to have that last.
Since he persevered, unless the council objects.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, if nobody has an objection, we'll let him come back up and have his say. He, he persevered, and that's pretty bad, suffering through a budget discussion.
It's cruel and unusual punishment.
He's paid his dues.
Thank you, Mitch. I'm, I'm still, uh, Art Taylor McBrayer, I sell my name. It's been very informative to see you folks are looking after taxes. It's, it's been very informative. I just wanted to say to you, that house is sitting out there now with ownership undetermined. I put five thousand dollars in this myself. We have put around twenty thousand dollars in it, the Historical Society. The question of ownership is, needs to be determined. We cannot raise money on something we don't have ownership in. We cannot get insurance on it, because ownership is not established. And so, I appreciate the, all the details, and when I heard EP mentioned, almost had a heart attack, when I realized was I have to go through EP, A, to determine about the, the, I'm asking this question. Could I dig a septic tank out there?
Do what?
Couldn't I dig a septic tank out there? I dug one seventy years ago, they're still good.
You can't right now, because the church owns the property in the house.
The, the, the question was actually raised, if a septic tank could be put on there, it would be extremely limited where, because the bulk of that land is in a wetland. So then you have to address the setbacks and things like that, which, of course, the, the city controls. I'm not saying no, I'm not saying yes. It would have to be evaluated, um, as to where the placement and, and, and where on that property it could. Um, and we don't have that data to be able to tell you right now.
Yeah, we'd have to go through the procedure, but I'm still able to dig septic tanks. I just wanted you to understand that I did one sixty-five years ago, that's still good. But somehow or another, to understand our dilemma, we can't raise money the way the situation is now.
We agree. And we, we've got to figure out how to honor the church for their part of the bargain, and we gotta do it at our next meeting.
Isn't there such a thing as the church going ahead and giving the property to the city, and the city in turn giving us a long-term lease? This is why we're recommending, because in Harrelson County, when the old courthouse there is owned by the county, but is leased to the Historical Society. This would strengthen us a lot, and I just hope you'll keep this in mind, because when we go to getting donations and applying for things, we have to show some, something in terms of tenure. And by the city owning it, it will strengthen us a great deal in giving us a, a, what am I trying to say? A lease. The lease will need to be at least thirty-three years in order to meet the standards by many organizations in terms of applications. So I know you're tired and you're busy, but I'm just pleading to see if we can cut through some of this stuff and determine ownership, so that we can't even get insurance on it now. We can't even touch the building now, the way that it is. We can't raise money. So we're in a dilemma. I'm just begging you to do what you can to help us to get direct, some resolution of this property.
Yeah, we can find a resolution to the, um, what we owe the church.
Which we hope we can do.
Hope we can do.
By December, right?
It was a non-costly one, if, if, in fact, EPD won't shut us down and will let us do it.
So, ladies and gentlemen, this is our dilemma, and I appreciate what you're doing. I've been in public service, I've been in elective office, and I appreciate so much your contributions and what you're doing. And I want to say something about the good judge here. I, I've been before him, and I've never seen a judge show the personal empathy to people that came before him in all my eighty-five years. And I laid out of school and went to court when I was about fourteen, so I've been observing courts a long time. And I just, I think we're blessed to have the attorney you have here, because in all my experience in going to helping people in court, I've never seen anybody give the personal attention and show the sympathy and understanding that's needed so much in law enforcement. Uh, is there any question I could answer?
No. Be assured, the church is anxious, is more anxious than we are to finalize the deal, 'cause they would like to, um, be done with the Harthouse themselves.
Well, I'm asking our legal attorney here if, if there's not some sort of conditional ownership, you know, in terms, I studied real estate a little bit and taught business law in college, and seems to me there could be some sort of arrangement where the, there could be some sort of conditional arrangement that would at least give us some setting so that we could go ahead and raise money and...
A conditional arrangement is to finalize the deal. That's what we gotta do.
I think that's what we're working for.
We're working for it, finalize the deal, and that'll do it.
Government moves too slow.
And again, I don't mind digging another septic tank. Thank.
Okay, um.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, let's see, your next, um, opportunity for public comment on the budget is November twenty-ninth at three o'clock, which will be a public hearing, uh, followed by another public hearing on December first at six o'clock, with the proposed, uh, budget adoption scheduled for December fifteenth. From a staff perspective, when does this council anticipate giving staff guidance? Because every time you make a change, it's going to alter, um, uh, numbers in the budget, and we have to work through those. So when does this council anticipate giving staff guidance, so that we can, um, uh, go in and make some of those changes and show you a finer picture? But of course, feel free to adopt it as is. That's always an option.
Don't hold your breath.
And, and what form would you, in what form would you like to?
Uh, you're, you're governing body, so, so you have to, uh, do it duly assembled, so...
Mayor, which way you want it? Yeah, explain that to me.
Well, you, you, you are a governing body, so the purpose of a work session is, is to give guidance back. So you, you collectively have got to give staff guidance of, you know, yea, nay, you know, you, you can't come to us individually and say, hey, I want this next, that next. That, that doesn't get it. Um, you, you have to, uh, collectively come to a consensus and tell us what you want and don't want.
On the budget?
Yes.
And then again, after we adopt it, um, the mayor has nine hours of veto, so don't hold your breath.
Yeah, it's ten days. Yep.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
What is the consensus of the council?
What is the cons, on the budget?
On how to give them more detail as to yes and no.
I got a heartburn with how much increase there is to it. So I'm, I'm not sure where to take it all out at, but I, we discussed a bunch of items.
And we have to do it when we're all together. When is the next time that we're all together? Because we can't put anything together when, when we're all together.
Correct. There'll be a public hearing on November twenty-ninth. There'll be a public hearing on December first. Um, uh, you, you, you have tentative adoption for, for December fifteenth, so y'all can call a special called meeting.
The November twenty-ninth, if everybody is...
Twenty-nine, be as definitive as po, that we all need to be as definitive as possible on what we want and don't want, and that means...
I'd like to eliminate some of those new positions, 'cause, um, I think there's too many new positions.
It didn't say that we can't meet, a couple of us together from now then, and then...
Oh, well, yeah, I know. I can call one of y'all, and, but I mean, but we can't put it together and present it, except in an open meeting.
I just wanna make a, a statement as far as that's concerned. We ran six months on a contingency budget when we swapped over from a fiscal year budget to a calendar year budget. And I just wanna throw this out there. We won't know until after December sixth who one of our ward councilmen is.
True, yeah.
You know, I would just urge you to think about that. You know, it would be good to have that person in place, uh, so that you have a full council and mayor when you adopt the budget.
We agreed not to adopt the budget until we had a full council.
Well, we could still, well...
You won't know until December the sixth, or...
Right, and he, he needs a shot at it, too.
We can still go back and sit down and talk about what we want and what we don't want.
And then have that, add that person in.
Bring out one person in and say, here's what we like, what do you like?
What do you, and then...
You're gonna have to have a chance to look. I hope he's looking at the budget. There's only two people in. I hope he knows all through the budget, since he's sat through it, you know?
Well, but we don't know who, which person it's gonna be, so they...
I said whoever.
Hope both of y'all have some good ideas on how to cut this budget.
The city manager did provide budgets to all the candidates, and thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Okay, one last thing, one last thing.
Hurry up, now you know, get on.
I know.
We want to go home and eat.
I know. So we're gonna, we're gonna schedule a public hearing, and, and then obviously have, um, workshop style on the twenty-ninth, so that you can meet. Um, second thing is, um, unless I misheard you, I understood multiple times that you were going to defer final public comment until after the end. So you're at the end. I don't know if there was anyone else in the public, but, but, but I wrote down that it, it said, hold off until the end, we're gonna have public comment.
Well, we, now, we, we agreed to put it in the beginning, and then we gave him an option to come back.
Yep. But is there anybody else in the audience that want public comment? Cause, cause there...
I think there is.
Oh.
Oh, hold on, hold on. If so, they, let them decide first.
Okay, if you got some public comment, we'll give you about a minute. Line up. I'm watching the clock.
Two, two things. I'll make it quick. Two things. I think every meeting, for someone like myself to be involved, number one, it's in the, in the middle of the day, so not everybody can come be involved. So I, I think that last time I came, I had to get up, it, before the meeting, I think that end of the meeting should be a time that public opinion could come, address what has been discussed, 'cause it's been a lot. And then you guys can leave the, the meeting and go home on the public opinion, not have a discussion here, but go home and reflect on what everyone brought to the table and said at the end of the meeting, based on everything they sat through. So that's one thing I'd like to see, is public opinion at the end. You can have the beginning, too, if you want to, but it really doesn't make any difference what they say in the beginning, because you already have your schedule, you already have your papers, boom. At the end of the meeting, hear what we have to say, go home, chew on it. When you come back, you can address the public opinion that was at the end. That's one thing.
That's your minute.
I won't borrow my assistant's minutes, not here. The other thing is...
We used to have public comment at the last.
But I'm sure it started to get in all the essence.
Well, people have to go home, they're gonna win one.
Okay, 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 y'all kept it on time. He's probably ready to go.
One time, one time.
So that's one thing. The other thing is, uh, we've heard a lot of talk about the budget. Do we have a copy? 'Cause it's a hundred and something pages.
It's online.
I didn't print it out. You ain't heard a question. Of two thousand sixteen, what we've used in our budget thus far, actual numbers, not projected numbers, but actual numbers. Do we, is there a page I can go look online at that? Do you have that? What page is that?
Do the, um, departments click on budget, and then you'll see all the monthly financial reports going back to...
So it's not just one, like, you know, thus far this year, it's every, in departments?
Is it in the budget style? Mr., David, is it in, like, the budgets lined up?
It's your monthly financials that you...
Am I gonna be able to figure it out if I go on there and look?
No, you're not.
No, no, but you can call. You can call, say, I can't find it. Help me, no.
Somebody get some food in Coach's belly. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
We did in the past on our budgets have, uh, the actuals for the year at one time, but not on this budget.
Okay.
Okay, next.
I'll make this as quick as I can. I, as Jeff indicated in his questions, the devil's in the details. So I'm not gonna get into the, down into the weeds. I'm gonna try and keep it a little bit higher up. The, in expense part, uh, part of the budget, the statements based on current year projections, smacks of baseline budgeting used by the US government. And everybody knows how badly that's been abused. I would prefer zero-based budgeting, where the department head looks at their department and says, okay, what programs are we adding? What programs are we taking away? What new services are we adding? What are we, what are we curtailing? Uh, what new regulations are out there? Did I gain any efficiencies in my department? And come up with a new budget based on what they're gonna be doing for the next year, not what we did this year plus some, some percentage. We've had, we've got a crisis going on now. We've got a water crisis. Were there any changes to the budget made because of that crisis? Last year, last, the year we're in right now, we took money out of reserves. The city council took money out of reserves, and to Councilman Carter's point, this budget doesn't put any money back in reserves. The same question we're asking about the splosh. We, we took some out, but we didn't put any back in with this budget. And there was a comment made up here, I'm sorry, Sarah, you made the comment. We left some money in there for contingency, for unexpected projects. Are you gonna allow contingency money at departmental level, or are you gonna control contingencies?
We in the past have controlled it as a council, so...
And the last, last statement is, is your pay scales have gotta be right. You gotta take care of your people. Otherwise, you will lose your best people. So rationalizing pay scales for, for the people to make sure that they're competitive, and, and that people that were hired a long time ago, that maybe somebody new came in, was hired at a higher rate, because that's what the going rate was, you gotta take care of your people, otherwise you're losing. And the people are what make the place special.
Okay, that's public comments. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, that's public comments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll hear a second. All those in favor? Adjourn.
We had a motion a long time ago.
Yeah.
We had a...